Yeah, I mean, it just doesn't want to expand it. I don't know why. I mean, it's never had, it's never done this before. Do you think if I go to? Let's see, no.
You want to try exiting and restarting and coming back in the meeting?
Uh, sure, I can give it a try, hold on.
No, this is William. Before you do that, you have another screen going. You have a second screen going on in the background if you were to swipe up. Um, and then click the screen. That's how my Apple works. Anyway, I have two screens running and when I have a small screen, it collapses into a very small picture.
No, the answer to that is it will not scroll up as if you're eliminating. If I was to do that, I would be exiting. I would be exiting the uh, the program. It won't, it won't let me do that. Simple as that.
Hey Dot, why don't you go ahead and try to exit and? Like William said, if there's any other screens active, go ahead and and minimize those or kill those and see if that works.
Okay, I'll try.
Alright, so we'll wait a couple of minutes. So hopefully Doc can rejoin us here shortly.
Well, it's amazing. We, we don't have even more than more IT kind of problems than the, than this. Usually it's one or two people and I think we're fortunate. For that.
Knock on wood.
That or we still know who's having problems.
Yeah, that could be too. Yeah, bigger crowd now with the planning commission. That's great. Good to see some other faces on the call.
I think. Sarah, did you hear anything from Councilmember Mercer? I'm not seeing him on. I know you sent out the reminder email about the 5:00 PM start.
He's just now on.
Oh, got it. Perfect. Thank you. Alright, so we're just waiting a couple of minutes trying to get a council member. Oh, I see her on there. Well. Dot, can you see everything a little better now? You're muted. You're still muted.
There wasn't, my fingers must be cold. I, I can see nine screens.
Okay. Well, it's better than four, so. Alright, with that, um, I think we've probably got most people and everyone else. Um, if anyone's running behind, you can just trickle in. So. I'll go ahead and call the, wow, February 1st, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting to order at 5:03. And the first thing on the, it would just be for the good of the order. Do any council members have anything that they'd like to bring up? Councilmember Lengel?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, this, I guess, is a question I want to put to all the council members here on the COW. And um, back in November, I started getting concerned that um. We had approved a lot of positions, which I voted for all of them, but we were continuing to get additional uh. Requests for staffing. And so I asked the question, you know, I'd like to see what we've accomplished in these investments. Um, I broached that question again. Uh, on Monday, uh, but I did submit the question the Friday before. And this is, in my mind, this is really important. Simple analogy. Somebody gives you $50,000 to buy a truck for them. And they expect you to buy a truck that drives forward and accomplishes the task. And so this is not a criticism, criticism of administration. Frankly, I'm concerned that a lot of what we've done is um. Pay folks additionally more, not questioning those votes at all. But we really aren't necessarily gaining much ground to address the very, very serious growth pressures. We experience and the growth cycle we're in. So my request of colleagues here. Is that you let uh, the Finance Committee take a look at this. And work with administration on a format so information can come back to council. Alternatively, we all work on that format. Um, but I really think if we don't understand where our investments have been effective. Um, we run the risk of not making good choices in the future. Uh, based on things that are provided to us. And I, I do appreciate options to choose from, choose from. The all, you know, those are the two most striking uh, uh, options, but I. Am very, uh, we've had two letters submitted into public comment now. Raising questions about our commitment to staffing and all that they do. And I think I want to be able to answer that question to anyone that walks up to me. Um, I want to be able to tell what we have worked collaboratively with. The administration on and what we've approved and how it's working. Um, and I, I don't know any other way. Um, to feel comfortable continuing to approve more and more positions. Um, even though I have serious, very, serious um. Worries about whether we have enough capacity to all, to do all that's asked of us. So that's what I'm putting out there for good of the order.
Thank you. Um, I guess, you know, to try and consolidate this because I don't want to have this more into a big old discussion, uh, given all the other things we have on our agenda, but. I guess, um, I think the two questions are number one, is this something that the rest of council is interested in? And then if so, is it something? Just in terms of the format of this report, is that something you would want the committee of the whole to look at or just the finance committee to bring back? Um, to council. Um, does anyone have any thoughts on those two items?
Okay, may I add one more thing?
Sure.
Before I put in this request around the Finance Committee, I, I do want everyone to know that I did look at the code. And it's, the Finance Committee is written into the code is when we want to format reports. So I, I am not trying to ask this to do something that isn't. Already clear um, within the code.
Great.
Um, let's see. So yes, I would be interested with a couple of caveats. Uh, first of all, as an ex-manager, I understand the question. Isn't easily answered. You know, if I have, you know, through my career, I had up to 10 to 20, 30 people working for me at any one time. When I hired a new employee, if I was asked, what can, what, what difference has that employee made? Um, especially if I have that employee spread out among, among a number of different projects. It's not necessarily an easy question for our staff to, to answer. Now, there may be some other. Situations where it is. So maybe, it may be a simple, well, we accomplished this project and without that person, we wouldn't have accomplished that. But I. Suspect the answer will always be more complicated than that. So Dot, it would be helpful, I think, for staff. If you could give some examples uh. Or at least some bullet list items. What do you expect as far as this, these accomplishments, accomplishments are concerned? Because like I say, it, it could morph into a uh, a, a bigger job that would take staff, you know, a fair amount of time. And we, I don't think any of us want that to happen.
Should I answer that? Councilmember McHenry?
Uh, maybe. I think let's just kind of take notes for now. I want to kind of try to get around the room just so we have time for our training and everything. Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I, I think this is a great idea, but I also understand where, where uh, Councilmember Schaefer is coming from. But I, but I think there is an approach that would not overcomplicate it. I, I think it's. It's pretty clear that we've invested in quite a few positions and that can be, you know, you can turn that into a number. We were presented with reclassifications. We were presented with new positions, dollar amounts were associated with them. And I, and I think it would be helpful to see the investment that this council has made. To, you know, both increase capacity of accomplishing hopefully more things and relieving strain. And I think trying to put an. Quantify that would be helpful. Um, and it's important, especially if we are getting, you know, letters from the community concerned. That this council is not willing to invest in appropriate staffing. Um. So anyway, I, I support it. I'm willing to work on it as part of Finance Committee if I'm still on Finance Committee when we, you know, regroup here. Um, or, you know, the whole council. Um, either way, I'm, I'm fine with, I'll leave it up to the group how they want to proceed.
Okay, Councilmember Mercer Hoag or Isaacson, did you want to weigh in on this? Uh, go ahead, Hoag and then Isaacson.
So I do, um, I really think that this is something that should run through the Finance Committee. Um, but I think it can be done in an uncomplicated way. That's not going to take a lot of staff time. Um. I think it's really important that we do. Have messaging to the community about what all we've accomplished and how many jobs that we've. We do have currently three newer council members that might not know the history of what all we've done. So there's, it's not just the community, it's also other council members that um. We should be able to track and show what, what we've accomplished. So yes, I, I agree. But I want it, I think it'd be good to do um, in an uncomplicated way.
Okay, Councilmember Isaacson and then Mercer.
Yeah, just reiterating, I think what most of we're saying, I've been in the giving and receiving end of this in my career as well. Asking for more manning and then pushing back on the request for more manning. It's a negative, it's a, it's a necessary evil to push and pull on it, right? We can't, we can't micromanage our people. That we trust to do, to do their jobs, the staff, but at the same time, we're responsible for being accountable for our citizens' money that is being spent. Um, it's, it's got to be somewhere in the middle by the people who are requesting the manning. I think are the people we should go to if we can and say, you requested the manning, how is it getting accomplished? And, and um, over to the city staff on as we grow, our city staff. There's going to be more and more accountability. I think that we should require of them and metrics, man years accounting for what are we getting for our money? It should be part of their job description. To manage our people and know that the investment is being used wisely. It's, that's for growing and shrinking, right? If you try to shrink a staff, man, they're going to come, come out of the woods fighting at us about shrinking it. It's easy to ask for more. But when you start trying to push back to push it down because you won't think of an accomplishment, we need to see the data to, to protect those positions.
Thank you, Councilmember Mercer.
And I'm, I'm not going to add too much. Um, I think my, my big takeaway, and obviously I'm new to the, to the council, but it sounds like there's two aspects here. There's sort of a checks and balance piece, what, what's actually being done and then sort of a communication component. Back to the community. And so that I, I think there's both a forward, looking forward, looking back piece. And to echo saying, I think, you know, Councilmember Hoag said. There's, there's a sort of a more granular look if we were trying to do this from a, a financial accounting perspective and a more like. Where do we see this investment going? And, and I think that's a message that you can communicate back out to the community. We've allocated or we've added staff here with the intent to drive these functions and then add a little bit of. Essentially, uh, you know. Numeric numbers or the, the sort of the qualitative. Um, piece without getting too, too granular in the, in the financial. I think that's where it could get away, both in terms of the, the, the labor required to pull that together. And then I think it. The sort of the forest gets lost in the trees type thing. If the broader message is to really connect with the community. And show that we're making both good fiduciary um, calls, but also investing in the areas where the, the community cares about. I think that's, that's a simpler approach. So.
Thank you. So I'm kind of hearing that maybe perhaps um. The Finance Administration Committee could work with Administrator Opal to come up with some ideas and then maybe that could come back to a Cal for a quick check in and make sure. We've found the right balance um, that has been spoken about from pretty much everybody. Does that sound okay? Alright, great. Um, any other for good of the order items? Alright, I don't, don't see me. So with that, I'll hand it over to our city attorney, uh, Mr. Daniel Kenny for our training on Open Public Meetings Act, Public Records Act and social media.
Great. Well, thank you so much and thank you um, for having me tonight for the COW meeting, for this presentation. And uh, good to see all the uh, planning commissioners. Uh, we haven't had a chance to work together much. So. Again, I'm Daniel Kenny. I'm the city attorney. I'm with Ogden Murphy Wallace. I've been with the firm for almost two years now. Though as the mayor and I were discussing, have never been to the city um, in that tenure. So looking forward to a, a change in the pandemic so that I can. Make it out there and see you all in person for uh, various different things. Um, so today I'm going to be giving a, your open government. Uh, trainings is required training um, when you are uh, first elected or every four years. And so for our new council members and for our council members. Um, that are um, uh, at that four year mark as well. So um, really great refresher for everybody. I'm going to put a PowerPoint up on the screen and I'm going to go through the Open Public Meetings Act, the Public Records Act and our social media policy. Um, if you've got questions during that time, I think I'm going to have on my screen still your, your, your pictures and the um, panelists. But if I don't. Have see that for raised hands, just please do come off mute and ask questions. Um, I encourage that for the, uh, for the discussion. Um, and so if I don't see a raised hand, that, that's why I just got it. So let me just put that up on the screen real quick. Okay, can you all see my first slide without the little like notes section?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And I can still see everybody's picture on the screen. I don't have the panelists uh, portion, but I can see you if you're, you know, flailing around waving your hand. So. Um, okay, great. Well, we'll get started uh, on this presentation and we. There we go. It automatically puts some fun stuff in for transition. So we'll go through that. Um, okay, so there's um. Two sections that are primary for the open government training. The first section is the Open Public Meetings Act. I'm going to provide this PowerPoint presentation to everybody on the call afterwards. There are some hyperlinks in uh, the presentation that will take you to. The different things that we're talking about. I also highly recommend referencing MRSC dot uh, ORG. Uh, the Municipal Research Service Center. The uh, MRSC website has available to anybody. All sorts of tutorials on these topics and others that will help you get an understanding of the basics of things like the Open Public Meetings Act. Um, and a whole range of other municipal topics. And so they have uh, question, the answer, the answer documents. They have. Quick tutorials and cheat sheets and things like that and presentations. So I recommend that if you've got questions, I'm of course a resource. Please reach out to me. But the MRSC has resources for kind of, if you want to do a little bit of reading after this to continue your familiarity. Um, and the second one is the Public Records Act. Um, that's 4256 RCW and the OPMA is uh, 4230 RCW. This training is required within the first 90 days after you take office and then for every four years after that. And so it's a great opportunity for. New council members to get up to speed, but then also for our existing council members to continue their learning and refresh their memory on how these uh, different laws work. And so again, we've got those two uh, laws that we'll go over. We're also going to do your social media policy as well. Um, but two quick notes. Um, today's um, training and kind of tutorial is not a policy discussion. Um, so when we get to the social media policy, that's a policy adopted by council. And so what we're not going to do today is rewrite that on the fly, for example. Um, and so this is a training opportunity. And of course, if you would like to explore things any deeper. You could put that on a cow or on her regular council meeting as necessary. Um, also. This is intended to be a learning exercise. Um, you know, fact-specific scenarios that may or may not have happened or that you think might happen or anything like that. We're not going to, you know, answer legal questions on the fly here. Um, I'll, I'll probably put out some hypotheticals to help, you know, explain things. Um, but we, we don't want to go through and be like, well, I did this or I want to do that. Can I do that? Um, feel free to reach out. We'll walk through all of that. Uh, we'll use our resources that we're going through today to make sure. Um, that everybody's comfortable with whatever that scenario may be. Um, but for the training today, we're going to stick to the, to the training aspects. Okay, so we're going to start with the Open Public Meetings Act. The Open Public Meetings Act is the thing that kind of guides how we do what we're doing here tonight, right? So we pulled everybody together. We noticed this meeting. We all gathered. We're starting the meeting. It's being uh, publicized uh, out to the public. Um, of course, we're in kind of a unique scenario right now that we'll talk about with the pandemic, but um, this is what the OPMA covers and is why we do the song and the dance of these meetings. And really the reason for the OPMA is because. The, the, the policy behind it is to make sure that um, you all don't decide what is good for the public to know. The public just gets to know what goes on in government. Um, and so um, they, they need to have that interaction with what you do and the OPMA is the way to guide that interaction. And so all meetings of the governing body shall be open to the public gavel to gavel. So that means that from. From the very beginning to the very end, everything that the governing body wants to do, and we'll get into. Do what, what you do uh, in a second here, but that has to be part of an open public meeting that is noticed and published uh, out to the public. Uh, all persons must be uh, uh, permitted to attend your meetings. What this means is you can't have conditions on um, participator, uh, by, on attendance. And so um, no, nobody does this, but you can't say, you know, uh, that you have to. Do something or be a certain way in order to get into that meeting. Um, what, what's interesting is we, we have changed so much here in the last two years because of the pandemic. There's emergency proclamations that are in place that allow um, these meetings to be held with a minimum level of public participation, of phone participation. That is unusual. Typically, it would be in person. Um, you have a location, you have a date and time when these, when regular meetings happen. And people can show up and, and participate and attend that meeting. Because of the pandemic that has changed. Um, at some point that, that will pivot back. Um, I would anticipate that the OPMA, the Open uh, Public Meetings Act itself will get modified to allow more flexibility due to technology and what we've been through. Um, but if it were to go back to the old days, it would be in-person meetings at a set time and location where everybody is allowed to attend. Um, and so again, the purpose is so that the public can um, participate in the decision-making process. Okay, so there's two definite, where there's a few definitions that come up with the Open uh, Public Meetings Act that are important. Um, so meetings of uh, the, the government. Um, in, include all sorts of meetings and, and a lot of things that you wouldn't necessarily even think of as meetings. Um, your regular meetings are codified, again, like I said before, a regular date, time and place. Um, you can have special meetings as well. We'll go into those here in a minute, all the different types of meetings that could come up. Um, and again, meetings occur when there's a quorum of the body. Okay? And so uh, now that we've got our seven council members, the quorum is four. And so anytime there are four or more council members. Really doing business and we'll get into what that means here in just two seconds on this screen. That's a quorum of council and it needs to be noticed as a meeting of the governing body. Action is the term that is used for when that gathering needs to then be noticed. But action is a little bit um, poorly defined in that. It really means pretty, pretty much anything. It's when you're taking public testimony. It includes deliberations and discussions. Considerations, reviews, evaluations and actions doesn't have to be just final action. And so really it's when you're doing anything because when it is, is as simple as discussions and considerations. It's not if you took a vote on something. Um, or you decided something in some way. It's really if you talked about something. So when you think about a gathering of a quorum and simply discussing, that can happen in a lot of different scenarios. And so let's talk about the different types of meetings that you're going to run into. You've got your regular business meeting. Uh, you have that tonight at 7:00 PM. That's the one that's set out by rule on when that's going to happen. You also have study sessions, workshop, workshops and retreats. Um, that's, you know, something like the COW meeting that we're in right now, joint meeting um, and retreats at the beginning of the year. Um, special meetings can happen. Special meetings have um, uh, very limited notice, uh, 24 hours notice can be called by um, uh. Most anybody on council. And final disposition uh, can only be taken on the things that were on the agenda that were noticed for that special meeting. And so this is an interesting one that comes up a lot where you have a special meeting and you're talking about something and then somebody thinks, oh, hey, I've got another topic I'd like to talk about. Can I amend the agenda to add that? And the answer is typically, you can amend the agenda to add it, but you can't take final disposition on it. And so it has a very limited scope of what you can do at that special meeting on that additional item. So more often than not, things are not added to a special agenda or a special meeting agenda for that reason. It's very limited scope. So uh, uh, city council committee meetings is something that comes up all the time and whether they're subject to the OPMA or not. Um, and committees, which are typically only three council members at one time, otherwise you'd have a quorum of council. Um, can be subject to the OPMA. If, and I put just a very quick snapshot of, of the legal rule, that if that committee acts on behalf of the governing body, number one. Number two, conducts hearings. And number three, takes testimony or public comment. So of those three things, the one that I see the most that comes up with city council committees is number three, takes testimony or public comment. And typically what I see is that that is in a, a land use committee, for example, because you might have a developer that's particularly interested in something before, uh, uh, in a topic. That is before the land use committee. Sometimes maybe public works. So if that committee allows that individual who happened to show up for that meeting to participate and provide public comments. That committee then should be subject to the OPMA, which is noticing the meeting, being open for participation and taking that public comment. If the city council committees do not do these things. Then they would not be subject to the OPMA. And so it's just something to consider. And of course, quorum rules apply if it is subject to the OPMA. And what's challenging about that is a quorum of. Or a, a committee of three, the quorum is two. So just two people talking to each other about committee business would be a quorum talking and that needs to be noticed. So that's why it gets particularly complicated. So uh, again, more meetings. There's lots of different types of meetings that you can, that you'll see. Um, executive sessions are one that happen uh, regularly with council. Um, they can be held at a regular or special meeting. There is specific legal rationale that needs to be provided in order to have that executive session. And an executive session is where the governing body goes outside of the public meeting that is set up. In, in, in these days, right? It's going to be a separate Zoom link into a separate area where nobody from the public can part, can hear or, or have access to. If you're in person, you would have, you'd go back into council chambers or you go into another conference room or something like that. And you would have a separate discussion outside of that recorded atmosphere where the public is uh, able to participate. So you're going to state your, your reason for the executive session. That can be um. Uh, uh, anything from something that I would be involved with for uh, potential litigation. Um, evaluation of real estate, evaluation of employees or candidates for um, uh, appointment to office. Um, when the, the appointment to, to city council, there was a, an executive session to, to have a discussion and then come back into uh. Um, uh, recorded meeting in order to make a decision. And, and the reason for that is no action can be taken uh, in an executive session. It's just for those discussion purposes within that. Very specific exemption to the OPMA that would be cited for that executive session. And so um, whenever I'm in an executive session, um, I'm always listening to the conversation to hear. Making, to, to hear what the discussion is to make sure it stays within the parameters of what the executive session's purpose is. And so sometimes I will say, that's beyond the scope of this executive session that needs to be discussed on the record, some policy discussion. Uh, of course, any action or anything like that. So when you get back into the open session, you can then take action on what occurred in that executive session. Um, so there's just a, a little bit of a process on how that works. Uh, before you go into the executive session, you state the basis for the executive session. The duration so the public, when they're away from the governing body knows, you know, what's going on and kind of can plan for it. Uh, and whether action is expected when you come back. Um, and then if you need to extend it, you can come back onto the record to, to give more time. Um, but really the public should know how long to anticipate you being gone and whether or not you're going to do anything when you come back. So there are a couple, uh, oh, well, and then the, the underlying portion, um, it's. Um it's really important to understand that executive, that attendees at executive sessions should keep what is dis- what is discussed in that executive session uh confidential. Do not disclose that to anyone. Um the 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 purpose behind the executive session goes away entirely if the members in that executive session can't rely on the other members keeping that information confidential to that group that had that discussion. Um that that is, that is the essential purpose of an executive session and uh makes it function right so that you can have the discussions about employees or real estate purchases or litigation without worrying that that information that you were talking about in that closed session is gonna become public. And so I can't stress that enough. A couple of different uh ways that you could have a meeting under the O P M A is attendance at others' meetings. And so whether that's planning commission coming here to city council or maybe council members going to a downtown business association or what have you. If there is a quorum of the body that is at that other meeting, um there's a very good chance that that should be noticed as a meeting of the city council or of the planning commission to make sure that everybody in the public understands that a quorum is getting together and they might discuss business. Because remember, the action definition includes discussions or considerations. So if there was a uh, you know, a uh festival um that everybody happened to go to and you don't all kind of s- stand around talking about city business, you you're not gonna need to notice that, okay? So it's, we're we're not going so far into the weeds for something like that. But anytime you're congregating around city business, um whether that's at your meeting or somebody else's, you're gonna wanna make sure that that's noticed. And so, like I said, with social events, you're just gonna have to see whether or not um it it makes sense and whether or not you could be viewed as all congregating together. Um but again, if there's a, you know, a street festival or something like that that goes on for four hours and you all are at there at some point, maybe not. But if you're all getting together for a particular component of it for um, you know, uh 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 an art installation opening or something like that, you're gonna wanna consider that. Okay, so serial meetings or rolling meetings are also really important, um particularly for our new council members, because this is the one that can, you don't even really realize it's happening until it's too late. Um so this is where a quorum of council members um take action, which again, discussions, considerations is included on city business. Um and it can happen through things like emails, text messages, phone calls or in-person meetings, even when a quorum of council are not present at at a discreet time, if that makes sense. So if uh a- as a hypothetical, if you have an email chain or a phone chain where one person calls another person, has a discussion, gets their input, and then that original person calls a few more people and has the same discussion and brings to those discussions what the first person talked about and then what the second person talked about. It's collectively bringing together all of that discussion. So just because there weren't four people on that phone call or on that email chain, if that email chain gets forwarded to other people or if that phone call happen, a second phone call happens and you bring together all of those conversations into one, you can have a serial meeting or a rolling meeting. All of that discussion and all of that interaction, whether it's segmented or all at one time, should be at a meeting just like this one right here. Um and so really, the only way that that's permissible is if you send out an uh uh an email or an an example of an email for the purpose of providing information, um merely so that they can passively receive it and they don't interact back with you. And so um, you know, that that's the easiest way to do it. The and and this type of thing, you know, a staff member can be a conduit uh for a serial meeting um where a staff member reach up, reaches out to all council members as an example and gets their feedback. That's fine, gathering feedback and gathering input um to work on a code change or a policy change or whatever that is. But if those conversations build on each other and the input of everybody gets stacked together in those conversations so that you all know what's going on with the other council members, you're gonna get to an end result and it's as uh because everybody else knew what everybody was doing. Then you're gonna get to a council meeting, approve a policy, and there will never be a discussion, yet everybody contributed to it. So so I hope that makes sense. Um. So let's see here, I'm sorry, I was going backwards. Okay, so I'm gonna now pivot to the Public Records Act. Does anybody have a question about the P R A? And I can, let me just quickly stop share and get everybody back on the screen. Anybody have a a question about the Open Public Meetings Act? This council member Schaefer.
Um, okay, good. Thank thank you. Uh, yeah, this is actually a bit more restrictive than I uh that I previously thought. And I, you know, I went through the training, you know, a year or so ago, but maybe this didn't pop out at me. But the fact that if we send out an email on a particular subject just to e- educate, for instance, the rest of the council, if someone, usually on those we put do not reply all. But if someone replies to me with their thoughts or ideas, does that, is that a potential uh uh violation of the Public Meetings Act?
So so in that situation, it would only be the two of you, you and the other council member, talking about that topic. What I would caution you against doing is then taking what you learned from that council member and calling other council members and letting them know, you know, uh just as an example, my state, you know, I talked to council member Hoag and we talked about this, we think this way. Now what do you think about it? Now you are giving the benefit to the second person of what you had uh in your first discussion. And so if you were to sequentially do that, you could get to a place where you've created consensus through these discussions, but those people actually never talk to each other. And so that's the, that's the concept. But it but if you reach out to a single council member or send an informational email and people passively receive it and don't respond all, and then you see somebody walking down the street and talk to them about something, you should be fine, again, as long as you don't then continue that to other council members.
Okay, so if I, for instance, if every council member responds to me, one, you know, just do only to me, uh as long as I do not relay relay to any other council member what, you know, what the what John told me, uh uh et cetera, then I'm still okay, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Good, okay, thank you.
Great, and ca- council member Napland, I saw you raise your hand there and and.
I I actually had that clarifying question and and council member Schaefer thought saw that it needed to be asked and answered. So but the the original reason I raised my hand was I'm thinking of an S B G A meeting, just for example, or any meeting, let's say. Um, those meetings usually aren't necessarily open to the public. I don't know if they're restricted necessarily, but I uh and at one point, I don't know if it's happening right now, we would get um. I'm using specifics, let's talk generic. Um, if you had to, if more than three council members wanted to attend, would we gather with the clerk and say, I think there might be four of us, it needs to be noticed? But and I think that that kind of thing has been done. My concern is that means that that meeting has to allow attendance of the public. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if there's any meeting that ever there will be more than three of us, we need to be assured that that meeting has public access. And during the pandemic, that means dial-in access by phone or the public.
That that that's correct. And um again, that's m- more often than not why um representation from the city to other entities is typically li- limited to a representative, maybe a an alternate or maybe a couple of people plus plus the mayor, of course. So you know, that is taken into account when when groups are put together.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's super helpful. I apologize for getting specific, I broke.
No, 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 and and I I I didn't intend to mean no specifics. I just didn't wanna rehash old situations or potential situations, you know. But but no, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think council member uh Hoag, I think you are next, and then the mayor uh has a comment as well.
Thank you. Um, so I I have two questions. Um, one has to do with committee meetings, because I have been in a land use committee meeting before, when someone from the public wanted to make comments. And so I'd like to, could you just clarify that a little more? That you were mentioning that that meeting has to be noticed? Or what were you saying about committee meetings?
Yeah, and so um I had hoped to pull this up in front of me. Um you have a section on your uh committees, sorry, I'm looking at your council rules procedure real quick. Um if I can find them, and I might be too slow in doing that on how your meetings are supposed to be done. And I think maybe I'll defer to either Laura or Sarah on how those committee meetings are noticed, if at all.
So I'll, I can jump in really quick for a land use committee. We do publish them to our website. There is an agenda and there's a link, so the public can participate. But the agenda says that um it's a listening opportunity for them. And if they wanna make public comment, that they need to do that via email or at a council meeting. But it didn't always used to be that way before we had land use committee meetings again. And on occasion, as council members and the land use committee will know, on occasion, we've had to say we can't take any public comment, we're really sorry. And so we have it now, obviously clearly on our agenda. So thank you, that was a great, a great question.
And you, our director Thomas has done a great job during that meeting where we've had the public there, so thank you. The other question I have is about executive sessions. Um now that we're in a Zoom meeting, I find it very difficult to keep executive sessions private. I'm living alone, so I I don't have any issue in my own home. But um I know that if if a spouse or some, you know, child comes into the room, what do you do? How do you, is there a way, should we consider having council members wear headphones? So it's private conversation, but I'm, I just don't know. It doesn't feel right sometimes with an executive session.
So so that's a, that's a great comment. Um and um I I I don't wanna be like overly strict, but yeah. I mean, the the executive session is intended for the for the uh ears of of those that are supposed to be in the executive session. And really, people shouldn't be walking through and overhearing what you're talking about in the context of the executive session. Um your phones help some, but that doesn't necessarily block them from hearing your contributions. And so I would encourage um you to find a place that works for an executive session so it can be confidential. Um so so that, there's that side of it. For those executive sessions and those conversations that I'm involved with, not this one as it's been a training, but can have um attorney-client privileged communications. And that privilege is uh effectively waived if it is, if somebody that shouldn't have it, if it's gi- if it's given out beyond that circle. And so what we don't want is um attorney-client privilege. And so by that, I mean discussion of legal risks and legal analysis um to be uh waived inadvertently because of somebody else sitting in that room that shouldn't have been there, that we don't see on the screen. Um so so that's great, and I know I know that can be very challenging, particularly in evenings when um your families are all home trying to go about their business and and you're trying to find that space. And so I think we should be mindful of that, and I do appreciate the question and 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 understand it's, it can be challenging. Okay, uh uh mayor, uh you're up next.
Um just to address the the um can larger regional committee issue. Um historically, the clerk who is the city that's hosting the meeting notices those meetings um for the organization as a whole. Um if it's clear that there's going to be, you know, a sign, you know, definitely a majority of council members from any given council, typically the clerk of that city will do an additional public notice. Um and but it's also super rare, with the exception of uh really typically the holiday gathering um that uh that we do end up having a majority of any council present at those types of meetings. Um so it's a very good point, but there are some mechanisms in place um that as we do have new clerks, I think in almost every city, it was a really good point to bring up to make sure that uh vice chair Napland um and chair rival of S P J make sure that that's brought up to the clerks as well, so that the new clerks um keep that up. And just a quick note on closed session or executive session to make it simple. Um as soon as we log off our main session to go into closer executive session, I lock my door. So you can't get in the door without a key. Um and I have to deal with the cats banging at the door until we're done, and sometimes that's a long time. So um you know, if as long as you have a room that you can lock it, it doesn't matter if it's a bathroom or not. If you can blur your screen, you don't want people to see your bathroom, there's always a place in your house where you should be able to go and lock your door and make sure that those conversations stay private. Um it's been a challenge, but you know, I I know I've adjusted pretty well to it. So um I hope that the others can do so as well.
Great, thank you so much. Uh council member Isaacson.
Yeah, so I have um two questions, just when I apologize for dragging out, but um. So when we're talking about conversations between ourselves as council members, um the, you know, the example that we're going through. It it as long as we're having, if we're having general con- like, like, what I wanna do is be able to talk to other council members and hear what they're hearing from the citizens that they interact with. Because it's, to me, that's the most important thing, is that we all understand what all of our citizens are saying, not just what I think the citizens say, and what the citizens in my neighborhood say. So if we are talking about a subject and I call another council member and say, hey, speaking to other council members, not necessarily a specific person, and this is what I'm hearing, they are hearing from citizens. To me, that's what our citizens would want us to do, but is that violating, like, like, I'm trying to pass a word, this is what I'm hearing in my section of the town. What are you hearing in your section? And this is what a council member told me, not a specific council member, but as long as I keep it general, I'm trying to spread the word on what their citizens want through our council members. Is that illegal?
Well, I I I don't wanna uh you say illegal, but no, that should, that should be done in a council meeting. Um that that is the pulling together of the council considerations and discussions that should be in an open public meeting. And so the 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 point is to avoid you gathering all of that and having people coalesce around thoughts and opinions and decisions and things like that outside of the meeting. And so what you're describing really is a great example of really what we want to happen in the meetings. Um and so you you can certainly, you know, like I said, it's an easy hypothetical, but it could happen in many ways, run into somebody on the street and say, hey, I've been thinking about this topic, you know, what are you hearing on it? But doing that for all the council members or a quorum of councils where the problem is. So it's not like you have to avoid each other or anything like that, of course not. Um but what we don't want you to do is to do a lot of that legwork to have discussions and to consider things outside of the open public meeting.
Okay, so I had to limit that to three, essentially.
Uh, correct.
Okay, so then the next question is, uh so i- if we want to get together as council members and citizens of the of the town, the social type of event, as long as we don't speak policy or what's going on in town or anything like that, is that okay, or does that have to be advertised at a public? If we, if we know we're gonna sit down and have a beer together, so to speak, and not talk shop, is that illegal or is that, you know, violation?
Well, so 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 that's the one that's always gonna be a little bit tougher, right? Because if somebody walks by and sees a table full of council members having a beer and talking, you know, they they may think that you're talking about city business. And and I think, just practically speaking, there's a pretty good chance it's gonna end up there at some point. And so I would be very careful with that. Um again, an open outside market where everybody's walking around doing their thing and you're running into each other, that that's certainly a different scenario from an optics perspective. Um but if you're all gonna go out to dinner and sit down together, um there's a pretty good chance that people are gonna look at that and question why councils getting together as a group, talking to each other in that way. Um and again, um you know, whether there's coffee with council and there's, you know, three people that jump on a Zoom meeting or meet at a coffee shop um to talk shop um and invite the public to it to attend. I've seen that type of thing. But again, when you pre- uh go across that line and get into a quorum of council, that's where it can get problematic.
Thanks.
Um, uh, city clerk from Philly.
Um I thought it might be helpful to clarify what the notice requirement is when we say notice a meeting. Um and you correct me if if anything I say is wrong, Daniel. Um but it's uh posting the agenda on the website. Um because of the pandemic, we're not required to post it outside, even though we do. And it's twenty-four hours in advance. It's it's not a, it's not a newspaper advertisement or anything like that. Um so if you're, if you think maybe you're going to possibly violate, I like say, a social event or something, it's or an art event or whatever, if you just notify me twenty-four hours in advance, I can put out what's called a notice of potential quorum. And that pretty much would cover you in, you know, if you think maybe there will be a problem. Is that right, Daniel?
Y- yeah, so that's right, the the. Yeah, so that's right. The, the only thing that is just, of course. Just tough to handle nowadays is, is with the pandemic, the minimum requirement for noticed media or participation in meetings is phone. And so if you were to get together at a location right now, there would need to be that phone participation. Thing that, again, that's not normal. Yeah, that's not, it's just, it's not normal. It will at some point change, I think. But I think others may know better than I, but I, I don't think there's an OPMA change. In the current session going right now, the mayor is saying no. So. I think we had all hoped that that might get into place so that we could start to talk about what those changes might look like. So let's all stay flexible on that. I think that's true, all the noticing and everything. But it's just not quite, it's not easy just yet.
And then just to say, it is okay to have a serial meeting if it's to set a date for a special meeting. That would be the only exception, isn't that right?
Yeah, I have to pull that open in front of me. I actually think you can set a, a special meeting with only three council members. In concurrence and requesting it. So, yeah, so. I, I think that is true. But again, you know, I'm going to say this in the, in the next presentation on the Public Records Act. The default and the best practice is to keep your discussions and your considerations, and of course, any action that you take. As a governing body in your open public meetings. That should be your baseline expectation for how you're operating, and there are times, and we've discussed a number of them. Where it can feel a little bit weird and a little different, but that, that's how the public gets to see what you're doing. Understand what you're doing and interact with it. And so that should be your baseline. And if you ever want to deviate a little bit from that, let's chat. I mean, and we can figure out whether it makes sense to do that and it falls within the rules.
Okay. And if I could ask one more question, if, if I as a staff member, I, let's say. The try, the council's trying to decide whether or not they're going to have city cell phones or something, and I poll the council to get their opinion on that. But they communicate only with me and not with each other. And then let's say I go to a future meeting, I say, you know, you know, everybody said that they want cell phones or something. For example, that would be allowed, is that correct?
That, that would be allowed, and, and that's the, that's the scenario that is, that works. What we don't want is for, for yourself or a council member or anybody to. Get one piece of information and build with the next person and say, okay, I've talked to so and so, they're in, are you in? Then the next person, okay, I've talked to two people, we think this, do you also agree or do you not? Because then you create that decision point throughout those conversations, but simply. You collecting that information and then going to a meeting and having the discussion on it, that's great.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Lingle.
I, I don't have a. The Zoom has been odd today on my iPad here. It's maybe not for this, but in an, in a land use committee. You know, we're dealing with things like final plats and what we think and blah, 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 blah. And I've been a little wondering about, since those are not noticed meetings. No, no decision is made, but they're not noticed meetings, but we still have the quasi judicial. Requirements of many decisions. So it seems like there might be a couple of places where quasi judicial could intersect with a, a committee. And I don't know how we would know if we were navigating something. In those discussions that could have a quasi judicial challenge.
Well, so I guess I'd have to.
Maybe another meeting here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'd have to sort through the scenarios that might run up with that, but if. The, 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 the issue with quasi, quasi judicial hearings before council. Is that you don't want to, that, that's where the appearance of fairness doctrine comes into play and things like that. And you should not be talking to those applicants in advance. You shouldn't be going to the sites in advance. You should be keeping, and you shouldn't be talking about it except for in that quasi judicial hearing, so that there is no. Bias being formed except for in that meeting when there's a presentation and then a decision by council. And so what you, for, for another training, for another day, but. Under, there, there's a great tutorial on this on MRSC as well, just FYI for everybody else on the call. But for the appearance of fairness doctrine, yeah, you really want to make sure, and, and I know Laura knows this all, all too well. Is whenever there's something like that that will be coming up, we'll make sure that everybody knows that it could be coming, and you don't always know, you know. It could become, you know, it could show up on one day and you didn't know six months before and the topic came up. But so, once, once you know or reasonably know that that's coming, you just want to make sure that, you know, your conduct related to that topic. Is held back and only limited to that quasi judicial hearing. And so we, we can absolutely go into that. Again, Laura is an expert on that. She deals with it all the time. And then there are trainings or, or materials available on MRSC as well, but great question.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to keep going to the Public Records Act so we can keep this cruising and, of course, just let me know if you've got any questions again. Let's see here. Okay, is that back up on the screen for everybody? Okay, perfect. Okay, so the Public Records Act is described as a strongly worded mandate. For broad disclosure of public records. As I was just saying a few moments ago. Really, the public expects to have access to public records. That is the baseline that we're working with. It requires all agencies to disclose public records unless an exemption applies. So there is a specific in forty-two, RCW forty-two fifty-six identification of exemptions. That may allow you to withhold portions of documents or entire documents, except for when those apply, the documents should be produced. There's fines for non-compliance and it requires strict compliance. And so again, the presumption is for disclosure of documents. And so that's our understanding of how public records work, is that they should be made available to the public. Fancy stuff there. Okay, here we go. I just copied and pasted in a portion of your public records request form that the city has available on the website. So there's a lot of process that goes into public records. You have a public records office, that's officer, that's your city clerk. You have rules of procedure for addressing production and record keeping, so that everything is timely. You have procedures describing how you're going to go about that process. You've got the public records request form. There's a, a process to receive that form, respond to the form. Within timelines and then produce responsive documents. There are allowed fees and there's a fee schedule for that. And then there's a process to deny requests. Again, you have exemptions, and so there could be portions of records that might be redacted. Due to one of those exemptions, and then there could be whole records depending on what the exemption is and what the record is. They would still get a withholding log or a redaction log that would show what they didn't receive. You don't get the content of it because it is exempt under the Public Records Act. But you do get to know that they haven't, the city has not produced records to you. And then there's, uh, there, there's also information, so that where you need to go to submit a request. Is on the website and there's the form that can be submitted as well. So there's a, again, a few definitions here. What an agency is, is pretty broad. So it's defined as all state agencies and all local agencies and all their employees and appointed officials. We'll get into some more details on that here in a second, and then a public record has kind of a two, two layers to it. It's any, any writing containing information related to the conduct of government. Or the performance of any governmental or proprietary function, prepared, owned, used, or retained. By that agency, regardless of its form. And so again, when you think about the underlying principle that it is broad disclosure of all public records. These definitions basically mean any, any document that you, that the city has. That it either has physical control of or that it used or retained or was prepared for it. Is going to be subject to disclosure. You don't need to worry about this whole definition in, in italics on the screen, but basically, because if, if, here, let me go back. When you look at this, a public record is any writing contained, containing information. Some people might say, well, if it's not a writing, it's something else. A writing includes basically anything you can think of. So whether it's an email or a text message or a physical planning file or a map or whatever that might be. A writing is going to cover all of that. And so all of the things at the city that could be covered by these definitions are going to be public records. And so there, there's a few things. It includes records of the agency business when they're created or retained by employees. This includes. And I want to make sure everybody's nice and awake for this one. This includes home computers. Non-agency email accounts and other personal devices. So if you text message about city business on a personal cellphone. Or if you email about city business on a personal email account. Or you're on your home computer and you download the agenda packet or you download communications. Or you have materials, supporting materials for something that you're working on in a committee, and you put them on your home computer. Those are public records that may need to be produced in response to a Public Records Act request. That's real important, and I would highly encourage you to. Limit the devices that you use for city business to only those devices that you're comfortable having. Them searched for public records response. That can be, that can be a time-consuming, intrusive and costly adventure. So just keep that in mind. Records include records used by the agency, if even if not in the agency's custody. So there are scenarios where a contractor or something like that might do something for the city. And the city might not actually have in its possession the records that are being requested. Also, it can be records that are held by a functional equivalent of employee. So if you hire out a public relations consultant. And that public relations consultant creates documents, does things for the city. That could be the functional equivalent of an employee, and that could also be a, a document that's not actually retained by the city. And so there's a lot of scenarios where documents out there, not just. The file that gets filed away on a planning application from nine months ago. That's certainly a public record, everything else is as well. So what constitutes a public records request? It's important to note that there are not, you know, there's no magic words. They don't have to say, I hereby request. Under the Public Records Act, the following documents. You want to keep an eye out for people looking for records and asking for it, maybe not really saying those words. So the requester must give fair notice that they're making public records requests, so they can't just. Imply something or, you know, go to the totally wrong person and ask the wrong question and hope that everybody understands it. There's got to be fair notice. Hey, I'd really love it if I could grab and get this document. Can you help me with that? They don't say public records request, they don't reference the Public Records Act, they don't use the form. But we got to keep an eye out for it. The city absolutely has the form, and that's the best way to document it and track it. Importantly, you must seek records. The Requester must ask for records, those documents, those writings that we talked about. The city is not obligated to create information or to create records. So if somebody says, hey, I'd love to find out. All of the plan, I, I'd like a list of all of the planning submissions and how they all turned out for final plats in the last 10 years. If that was the request, they would receive in response to that. Assuming they clarified it, all of the files for all of the final plats for last 10 years. The city isn't going to go through all of those, put them into Excel spreadsheet, say applicant, location, disposition or whatever. We're not going to create that for them. And so that's, that's an important thing, because there are oftentimes requests for information that come in that the city would not respond to. Again, and then the, the, there's a kind of a, a window when a request comes in the door. That request is seeking documents that are existing at that time. If that request takes three months to respond to and new records come into existence. And the request isn't a rolling request. It's not open until clo- until it's closed. It's open at the window when it came in. And then it'll get responded to at the time that it gets responded to. And so that's important because sometimes people just think, oh, it's, it's constantly renewing itself, and that's not the case. Though, to be clear, somebody can always just make another public records request. Okay, um, did I? I have records retention coming up here soon, Sarah, so I just wanted to let you know, I did have a slot here for. So how to respond to a public records request? So you, you all don't really need to worry about that. You need to work with your city clerk. To make sure that the request is funneled to her so that it can be documented and responded to properly. Please do that immediately if you ever see one. Of course, most all of them are going to come, come through her anyway. But if you happen to see one, please make sure it gets to the clerk. There's an addition, an initial five-day period where there's going to be a response. Where you can provide the record, provide a link to the record, acknowledge your request and provide an estimated timeline. Or seek clarification, or you could possibly deny it. So, you know, oftentimes, maybe it's going to be something some, uh, simple. And it can just be responded to, but for most requests that are going to take time to do some sort of query. On a database or what have your, go through records to pull them, it's going to be providing a reasonable timeline. And then the goal would be to provide it within that timeline. So the agency must provide or must conduct an adequate search. An adequate search includes searching all forms and locations and using relevant and applicable search terms. For all different sorts of records. And so if somebody wants to search for something related to a property and an owner. That search is going to be reasonably looking through emails and records. Using maybe the owner's first and last name or just the last name. The address for the property, maybe the parcel number, all dependent on the situation and, and the scope of the request. But what we can't do is we can't just say, well, we searched for the phrase. You know, Mr. Jones's property at this location, because it's going to be way too specific. Nothing's going to actually have that written down. So we're going to need to use criteria, search criteria that could possibly find that. So. Then there's a collection of information, you know, the criteria, the time taken to produce the record and the areas where it was searched. So we can document what we did for that. The city is allowed to produce an installments. The records can and should be provided installments if their request is very large or time-consuming. If an installment isn't picked up by the Requester, that is, that, that whole request can be deemed abandoned. The point is so that the city can incrementally work through and to make sure that that Requester is still engaged in that, that request. So there are a range of statutory exemptions. Not all records or parts of records are, are disclosable. It really depends on what those exemptions might say. Those should be narrowly construed, and so again, it's, the presumption is disclosure. But the exemptions can be narrowly construed to possibly redact or withhold documents. And again, as I explained earlier, you have an exemption log so that they understand that they did not receive something. There really isn't a general privacy exemption. And so we would go through those exemptions and find something that may or may not apply. And then work on that exemption log and do a production to the Requester. I'll just quickly go over this. The, the, the gist here is please do not destroy public records. Okay, that, that can be a felony and we don't want to do that. So preserve everything and make sure that, again, if you've got personal devices or anything. That you are maintaining all of the records on there, so that it is available for a public record search. Yes, Clerk McFon.
Something I think might be helpful. So when a request comes in. That freezes the clock on destroying things, you know, so if we get a, a request for a council document and I say. We got a request in, then, then you wouldn't go and destroy that record.
Yes, please don't. Yes, ab- ab- absolutely. And you know, it, it's kind of akin in my world to like litigation hold or something like that. Um, if, if there's a request comes in, it's looking, looking for certain information. Um, you know, on an administrative side, we should make sure that we don't have auto uh, delete on, you know, email servers or something that might catch that. That can be a challenge, I know. But, you know, we want to make sure that we are able to respond um, to the full scope of that request. Uh, for anything that's in existence at the time that request came in. Um, and so enforcement and penalties, so uh, the, the biggest thing for Public Records Act violations is that there's a war of attorney's fees. And so sometimes the, the, the actual um, uh, penalty, if you will, can be, you know, fairly small, but they might work on it for a year with an attorney. And so you could have real costs associated with that, with that piece of litigation. Um, and so the, the, the court would decide on what the penalty is, uh, not to exceed a hundred dollars per day um, for, for that denial of the record or uh, ability to inspect. There is a one-year statute of limitations, so there's some, you know, uh, ability to cut that off, but there's uh, again, I were, um, I want to keep going here. So there's aggravating factors and mitigating factors on what that consideration would be. We don't need to discuss those right now, but. So uh, records retention, I'm going to kick this over to Clerk McMillan here in just a second. But just uh, the city has in place uh, policies for records retention uh, consistent with the uh, state records retention requirements. Um, and so uh, Clerk McMillan, if you did want to speak to this now or if you wanted to do that another time?
I'll just very quickly mention, I know we don't have a lot of time. Um, you know, the state uh, records retention schedule is very lengthy and it basically sets forth every single type of record that we might possibly have, pretty much. Um, like for example, this scratched piece of paper on my desk is a record and it's redressed in the, in the core. And um, and so, and it tells you how long to keep each record. So six years, two years, you can destroy this immediately or please transfer this to us for permanent retention or whatever. If anyone has a record and they're not sure what to do with it, um, you can always contact me or I will also send you a link to the core. So you can just look and see like, oh, what, uh, you know, how long am I supposed to keep this? Um, so that's just all I wanted to say.
That, that, excuse me. That's great. So everybody just make sure that um, you're not deleting records and that you um, uh, check in with the clerk about, you know, anything that you've got that you may want to get rid of. So I'm going to largely skip the best practices because many of these are already in place. They're great to know. Culture of compliance, remember, it's uh, uh, the presumption is uh, retention and the production of these records. There's training, using the tools that are available to you, having policies in place and staying up to date on uh, the requirements. And then um, you know, as a best practice, not mixing personal equipment uh, and personal business with agency equipment and agency business. Uh, or assume that it will be searched. Um, we'll run into that and most everything we do, uh, to make sure that you can keep that separate. Okay, so we're now going to pivot to, to social media. So I will again quickly stop share and ask if anybody has any questions on the Public Records Act. Those two components, OPMA and the PRA are your open government training that you're required to take. So I want to make sure that we s- uh, pause and then see if there's any questions. And then we'll shift uh, to a uh, short but very important social media training as well. Uh, Commissioner Chappell?
Yes, thank you. Uh, does using a um, personal device for non-record keeping purposes but city business open it up to a, a search? For example, using my computer to Zoom with you, it, does it now become a uh, possible uh, uh? Target?
Um, well, I, I, I think, I think the, the, the big picture answer is yes, possibly. Um, but if you're just doing it for something like Zoom, um, the question that would get asked is, is there any record that was created by doing that, right? And so I think that there would be a record created if you download onto your personal computer materials for meetings and for discussions and for deliberations. And then they exist there as a standalone document. Um, I, I'll be the, I, I'm, I'm pretty good with technology, but I am not an expert in technology. So I don't know the full scope of what's put on your computer from Zoom. I've never heard of a request for metadata of Zoom attendance from a computer. I don't know how you'd write that. So, so I, I'm going to trend probably that, that's going to be okay. Um, but you know, if you link your ca- your um, city calendar into your personal Outlook and there's calendar appointments that show up on that calendar, that could create something that's on your personal device. That's probably a little bit more innocuous, but if somebody wants to know who was made aware of a meeting and who attended, you know, that receipt of that uh, calendar invite into that Outlook could show through the metadata that, yeah, you did receive that and you did view it. Um, for example, and, and that you did know that that really important meeting happened that you didn't attend or whatever it was. Um, so that, that's a, an example. Uh, any other questions before we pivot to social media?
Just quickly say, um, thanks. Um, just to say, most, most things that council members have are of a pretty short retention period. If it's a secondary copy of something, let's say you have a paper, you won't have this now, but let's say you have a paper uh, council packet. That's a secondary copy. You can get rid of that immediately without any sort of procedure. Cause I have the primary copy. That's the record copy, for example.
So, so that's totally true. Um, but what's complicated by that is if you don't get rid of it, even though there's a shorter retention period for it, it's, it still exists as a record. And so, um, if there is a shorter period and you can get rid of it, um, according to the rules, then, then do do that. Otherwise, you might have a stack of agendas that you're not even really thinking about that do still exist. So it's, yeah, uh, that's totally accurate. Um, but if you don't do it, it still remains a record. Um, so, great, thank you. So I, uh, so Commissioner Chappell, you still have your hand up that you, I think you were still done. Okay, great. Um, uh, Councilmember, uh, Isaacson?
You, you mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, the PRA, there are fees associated with, I guess, violations. First off, who gets fined? Is it the individual member or is it the city? And then where does that money go? When you pay that fee?
Yeah, so, so um, I, I think I, I said two different things. And so there are fees that the Requestor might pay to get the records. And then there's, there's the penalties for violation. For the PRA, that would come through a lawsuit and that would go against the city. Um, and that would go, those would go to the Requestor, the, the person that was, that brought the lawsuit. For an OPMA violation, those violations can be, have personal liability. So it's goo- good to keep that in mind. Uh, Councilmember Mercer? Nice to meet you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I know in, at my employer, we have both automated document retention policies based on system policies on the devices and, and uh, and then um, guidance in terms of similar to what we discussed here in terms of housekeeping or whatnot. I, I was curious if you could specifically comment on email and text messaging. I know there are automated systems that the city has to retain copies of those documents. How does that correlate with housekeeping we would do in terms of just deleting emails to, to manage your inbox or? Because it might, my sense is that we're still retaining copies on the backend on the server, even if we delete something. Um, and if you could just clarify that?
Um, well, I think technically I can't clarify that because I don't have the tech- te- technical expertise. But yes, I mean, the, the um, having an email server um, retain all emails is going to, is, is, is what's going to be necessary. And Clerk McMillan can maybe speak to that a little bit.
That was really the meta point. Yeah, so it wouldn't, le- less around the specifics of the technical. But if copies are being retained on the backend on the server, I, I think much like, like uh, Clerk McMillan said around the primary and secondary copies. If, if we can still, um, you know, manage our inbox the way we typically would do to, to, to get business done.
Uh, yeah, our emails are kept on the backend as are your text messages on your Verizon, on your, wait, on your phone that was issued to you. So if you're texting on your phone, we are keeping that on the backend. So you're right. So we're, we have the emails and you can manage your inbox how you would like to manage it.
Any, any other questions before I move on to social media? Cause I, I, I think we're a little over time, so I want to make sure that I'm respectful of the rest of it here. So, um, okay, so I'm going to pop this back up on the screen and keep cruising. Uh, this one, okay. Okay, so everybody can see the slide again. Yeah, great. Okay, so um, so there's two components to the social media. There is an adopted policy through Resolution sixteen oh three, council adopted. And then there's some legal standards that I want to talk about. I'm going to stop, start with the uh, uh, what comes directly from Resolution sixteen oh three, which again was adopted by council and is currently in place. Um, so I really encourage you to review that. I think every council member gets that part of a packet. And if you, uh, oh no, it was emailed out, uh, Clerk McMillan emailed it out not long ago. Um, and so everybody's got a copy of that. So I would just encourage you to get very familiar with it, um, given the day and age that we're in with social media. So as written, the policy applies to city council members and then staff working on their behalf to represent them. So not just all staff working, you know, on a day-to-day business, but it's council members and staff working for those council members to represent them. So it is a policy that is limited down in that manner. And so on this call right here, not everybody is covered by this policy. There's still some legal standards that we'll talk about, but I just want to make that clarification. Um, and so I pulled some, what I consider to be some of the most important portions of that policy. Um, and the first one has to do with the tenor of the online conversations and discussions being the same professional behavior that just, that you display in city council meetings and uh, uh, and community meetings. I think that's really important because maybe it's just the social media that I see going across my screen. But oftentimes it is a, uh, it's a way to communicate differently and it's not always better. Uh, let's just put it that way. So the expectation is that city council members are communicating on social media in the same way with the same respect that you would have in a city council meeting. Uh, very important is the next bullet, is that city council members should not use personal social media accounts to discuss city business. And then further, social media shouldn't be used as a mechanism for conducting official city business other than informally communicating with the public. So really, there's no social media, whether it's personal, because you shouldn't be using that for, for um, uh, city business. Or even if it is a city account, it shouldn't be for official city business other than to informally communicate with the public. And so the way that I read that is that there's a pretty limited use scenario for social media for city council members. It is an informal opportunity to communicate with the public. Um, we'll get into some, some clarifications on that, but I think that that's an important thing to, to note. The policy always, uh, also asks you to clearly distinguish between your personal view uh, from your official uh, city or city council or entire council position on a topic. Um, that's important so people understand when you are acting as a city council member and when you are not. So the policy also includes um, a, a requirement for a, a PRA disclosure or attaching a, a link to the notice that was at the end of that policy. So if you go to that resolution, there's a, a notice at the end of it. So it asks you to do, uh, put one or the other down. Um, that also, uh, that there should be a clear notification and disclaimer that the intended purpose of the site is to serve as a mechanism for informal communication. So I, I don't know practically speaking how that gets uh, effectuated because there's both a uh, a PRA disclosure and there's a, a, um, a notification and disclaimer that it's for informal uh, communication. So that kind of takes up a lot of space in these quick uh, social media uh, posts. Um, and then we're going to touch on a few things that we talked about in the first two sections that can come up with uh, uh, social media as well. First is to make sure that you don't have a quorum of council discussing on social media, city business. That can happen very quickly and very easily if you all are friends on social media or you see a post from somebody else on city council and comment on their post and create that back and forth in that, in the comment sections for that post. Um, that can create a, a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. Um, again, we talked about this uh, briefly already. Don't discuss quasi judicial matters on social media. Um, that could disqualify you from participation when that comes to council. So if somebody is on social media talking about something that's going to come to council for a s- uh, official approval as a quasi, quasi judicial act, you should not be interacting with that at all so that there is no presumption on how you're going to vote on that. Um, uh, there are, again, we just, we just spoke to this, there's record retention requirements. So if you are conducting city business on social media, you're going to need to retain that. That can be extremely challenging on Facebook because Facebook posts can get deleted by the owner, they can get reported by other users and get taken off. And so there needs to be uh, a recognition that if you are using social media, it needs to be done in the way that the policy allows it. But also a need, all of those interactions need to be retained when they're dealing with uh, city business. Finally, um, a, a government-created Facebook page, so the city's page or a council member's page is a public forum under the law, meaning that you can't pick and choose the communications that show up on that page. You are, for a limited public forum, allowed to create rules for that engagement. Um, but as a baseline, if you're going to allow comments, you're going to need to leave them uh, uh, on that post. You can't censor people on that public forum. Um, so o- one of the ways to deal with that is to not allow public comments. Uh, sorry, I use public comment in uh, comments from the public um, on that social media post um, to make sure that you don't run into that issue. So in addition to that resolution, which again, there's more to it than what I just put out, put forward, I would encourage you all to read that again. Um, there's a quick summary of um, how the Public Records Act treats um, social media posts um, as public records. So there, again, um, this is just a glimpse into my world. There's always definitions and rules, right? And so um, the rule is written out here and we'll go through it fairly quickly. But um, for it to be a, a, a public record, social media post must contain information relating to the conduct of government or the performance of any governmental proprietary function. This is very similar to what you saw in your policy from the Resolution sixteen oh three for the conduct of government. And it satisfies that requirement, um, when the information refers to or impacts the actions, processes or functions of government. Um, and so you got to think about what discussions you're having with those posts and whether it touches on these things and whether or not it's within your official duties. And the, the official scope of duties, there's three ways that that can happen. Um, if the, if your position required the post, the city directed the post or the post furthers the city's interests. This is, there's so many hypo- hypotheticals that you could come up with this uh, for the, these different ones. But I think uh, one example might be for uh, the open council position that was filled. So if as city council, you talk about, hey, we've got an open position, we need to fill that position. Here's our process. We should all go out to our social media and we should notify the public. Kind of that informal communication that we, that your policy would allow, that this, this opening is coming up and they should, uh, people should apply. And you give a link back to the city uh, page for where that application is located. That's something that I think probably would be allowed under your social media policy and that your position required it or the city directed it or it furthers the city's interest. Probably fit it into any one of those categories that you wanted to. Um, and so there are, you know, scenarios probably that we can all come up with that might not neatly fit within these categories and that wouldn't necessarily be related to the conduct of government under your policy. Conduct of government is defined under the Resolution sixteen oh three and is also, you know, working with these definitions or with these uh, rules here. So I guess I would just say, um, make sure that you review the social media policy uh, before and as you are using social media um, for your work as a city council member to make sure it's compliant with your own rules. And then make sure that you are retaining any posts that could possibly fall within the scope of a public record on social media. Um, again, I would err on the side of retaining those records to make sure that if they are. to make sure that if they are considered a social or a public record under the Public Records Act, that we can produce them whenever that request comes into the city. What we don't want to do is make a presumption that something isn't a public record, delete a whole bunch of them and then have a court tell us that we should have retained those. And so let's presume that we should be retaining those and let's presume that they could possibly be, uh, produced. So as I'm losing my voice, uh, Clerk McMillan.
I'll just add another IT, uh, related thing. So if the social media site was set up through the city, we are archiving those social media posts automatically on the backend. Just so you know.
Yeah, which is a.
Texts and emails.
Yeah, huge incentive to use that city account for city stuff and not your personal, uh, because it does get retained in that manner. Um, and so I just, uh, highly encourage, you know, just like using personal cell phones or personal email, same thing with social media, keep, keep everything with the city in one kind of channel over here, uh, for records, OPMA document retention purposes. So that went a little bit long, so I apologize. Uh, always available to answer any questions that you may have. Um, and, um, as this, uh, comes up, uh, we'll be talking about all these different topics, uh, time and time again. So thank you so much for your time. I'm sticking around and I'll be at the meeting. So, um, thank you for your attention. Now you're all trained up and compliant with the requirement.
Daniel, thank you so much for all of that. It was really interesting and it probably is getting everyone's, uh, brains working harder, thinking of questions asking in the future. I'm sure we'll think of some fun stuff. Um, anyways, I also want to thank the planning commission for coming, um, for this training and you are more than welcome to stick around for the whole meeting. Um, so with that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is utility discount options with Director Mason.
Evening, Council and Mayor and Mayor Proton, in a Mason Finance Director. I'll just quickly share my screen. Um, can everyone see the screen that says utility discounts?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So council expressed, um, interest in options for utility desk discounts. So staff looked at the utility discounts offered from the comparable cities from the ongoing salary study to kind of start the discussion. Um, tonight we'll talk about which demographics are provide, are provided, um, the low income discounts in those cities. Eligibility cri- uh, criteria for the amount of discounts offered in the cities and the amount of discount. And then we'll just, um, open it up for discussion and hopefully some direction from council. So nine of the 12 cities were researched and nine of the 12 cities offered discounts only to seniors and disabled low income residents. Three of the cities, including Duval, offered a discount to all low income residents, including seniors and disabled residents. Um, for the eligibility criteria, you can see here that the majority of the 12 cities uses Seattle Bellevue Housing and Urban Development Low Income Limits as criteria. Seven use the very low income criteria as their, um, criteria. And one used low or very low income limit as criteria, one used low income as a criteria. And then Duval offered a tiered up discount or offers right now a tiered discount using all through limits. And then you can see all three limits and then you can see one city offered a flat amount of, uh, fifty eight thousand four hundred, one city used the Department of Revenue Income threshold level two and then one used a hundred twenty five percent of federal poverty guidelines. But this chart right here doesn't include Duval, which is showed on the next slide. But the majority of cities, you can see, um, offered utility discounts in the thirty to forty or thirty to fifty percent range and just a few were over here with fifteen percent, one with twenty five percent. And one with seventy five percent and then one city offered a hundred percent discount on its storm drainage utility. Um, this is a Duval's tiered, tiered discount. So we offer ten percent for, um, people that are under the HUD low income or that need the whole, of the income level limit for HUD, uh, low income, uh, fifteen percent for the very low income range and then twenty percent for the extremely low income range. And then there's fifty five, currently the city has fifty five residents that take advantage of the discount or qualifies for it. But, um, we do not ask the age, so we're not sure how many of these residents are seniors or if any of them are disabled. So, um, the questions are, is council interested in changing the tiered approach of using HUD income limits as criteria for the low income discount? And if so, we'd like to move away from the tiered approach, what, what limit should be used? Um, is council interested in changing the discount rate for low income residents? And if so, which discount should be offered? And then the majority of the cities, um, in the study offered discounts to senior and disabled persons only. So is council interested in changing to who the city offers this low income discount? So I will open up for discussion or in questions if there are any.
Councilmember Isaacson.
Yeah, in the packet that you sent, there was, uh, some numbers that listed the, um, the, the increase in the number of citizens who are delinquent and, uh, uh, approaching the moratorium of shutting off their utilities. How many of those actually would be, or fall into any of these categories of low income, very low? Or are they just above that?
I, I think, um, so I don't have that information with me, but I believe and I'll follow up. I'll, I'll do a follow up question. I believe the majority of the people who are having their water shut, shut offs are not receiving the discount. Um, they haven't applied for it, so they may definitely, um, be eligible for it, but they have not applied.
Do we know, so we won't know how many of them are eligible either then, right? So.
Right.
My problem with this is we're trying to ask would be willing to vote or approve or change. And it's what we really don't know how many people in this growth since the moratorium really fall in it that we would help. I mean, is that a data point that we can get?
You know, I'm not sure if we can, if we, uh, we, I, I guess that would be a question for Daniel. Maybe if that's something that we can ask our residents, um. If he's taller.
Yeah, I'm here, so. Is, is it information that we would need to, uh, I'm sorry, I saw Kevin with his hand up too, maybe he has a response on it. Is it information that we don't have?
We don't have information on the majority of the residents who are having their water shut off, whether they're low income or, or not. It's not information we collect when we, um, when we set up the accounts.
Yeah, I, I do not think that we'd be able to reach out for that, no.
Yeah, that's, so, so what I was saying, Daniel, is, uh, you know, it jumped in is that that, that sort of information is not really privy to us. There is information that can be pulled from the American Community Survey. It's not all inclusive because it's voluntary. And in fact, it's, it's, it's the same thing you, you know, when we do the, when we do the census, they fill out the census. It's, it's a supplementary to the census that happens in between the two census years. Um, and it's completely voluntary and because of that, uh, you know, the numbers are, we, we, we can see what we can pull down from them, but they're not. They oftentimes are not terribly, terribly good, especially they're very underrepresented. They can be easy, they can be underrepresented at the high level of income and at the low level of income because they're the ones who tend not to, to answer, uh, the questionnaires. So there is information we could probably pull, but it's, it's, it's bad. Uh, or it's, it's just not statistically significant.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, I have two questions. Um, first of all, uh, how do we determine the income level of a household? I assume they apply and they provide maybe a tax statement. How, how is that done, Director, Director Mason?
Yeah, for, for our city, they do give us a social security statement or a, a tax return. So we do ask for proof of, of income.
Okay, okay, thanks. Uh, second question is, uh, with our current tiered income approach, is that somehow more work for, for staff? Or is it just fully automated and it doesn't really create more work than a, than say a single tier would?
That is actually a very good question, as not one that I asked our utility billing, um, person. I, I think since it's set up, it's probably not more work. Um, it's just not, it is streamlined. So she, I mean, the whole, I think the additional work that our, our, uh, utility billing county associate would have to do is just make sure that they fall into the right bracket.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other council members have questions or comments? Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, if you're looking for feedback, um, for what you're going to bring forward next. I, I appreciate that Councilmember Schaefer asked about the, how difficult it is to keep the tiered system because I, I definitely don't want to eliminate, uh, those in the highest tier that are already getting a discount. But I also think we should be significantly more generous. But I don't know if, you know, if it would quite make sense to bring that much more generous discount all the way up to the top tier. So, um, if that could be something that we could get reassurance on, that if we continue the tier, it, it will work potentially with, you know, I don't know if we're getting a new billing system. Um, just Dana, I don't know, uh, Open Gov is going to do some of our billing or if it's just part of it. I, I don't want to ask for something that is not able to be accommodated. But I prefer to give that, maybe get rid of the very bottom tier and just go the, the very low, which I believe is the middle tier, you know, give it more of like a forty to fifty percent discount and then leave that top higher tier there and maybe do a twenty percent discount. That's just kind of off the top of the, my head where I, I kind of wanted to start. Um, anyway.
Councilmember Mercer.
Yeah, I, I was actually kind of going where Jennifer was going a little, little bit in terms of both from, it struck me in terms of Duval being an outlier in terms of, from a percentage perspective. And, and I guess it may not necessarily be a topic for this meeting because I know we're, we're limited on time, but would be great to understand sort of the historical context of why we're, we're, we're sort of an outlier compared to, to some of the other cities that were included. If that was due to, you know, historical financial concerns and we couldn't be more generous or it just hasn't been updated over, you know, an extended period of time. But that's the, the thing that struck me is, you know, there, there is a, uh, sort of an obvious bump to just bring us in line with comparable communities. But then the, the, you know, the additional oversight that needs to be done to, to ensure that it's not overly generous and or, you know, could be abused, uh, e- either intentionally or unintentionally. So, um, it, it'd be great to get a little more context, not necessarily again in this meeting, but to, to understand how we got here.
I, I can't say that we've been using the tiered approach since two thousand and two. And it was last updated, um, moving from just a, a flat tiered amount for each level to the, the HUD income limits in two thousand and eleven.
Any other comments or questions? So Director Mason, I don't know if you've gotten everything you need. Sounds like we have a couple outstanding questions, but you know, I'm in favor of simplifying it more. You know, similar to what Councilmember Naplin and Mercer were talking about. If it would be easy to maybe keep the tiered system a bit, but maybe combine the two up bottom lowest levels, you know, to one discount and then the next step. But I don't want anything super complicated, but it seems like out of all of the ones you looked at, we are probably the most complicated city. So, um, I, did you need anything else from council for now? Or do you think you have enough to kind of keep moving on it?
Um, so it sounds like, well, would you like me to bring something forth at the next meeting that just shows what it would look like, um, and what the cost would be to move to two tiers of the low income and then the very low income and everything under the very low income? And then, um, I don't know if there's any other information except for perhaps maybe digging in a little bit to see why we use the tier, tiered, uh, income in the first place.
I mean, I'm seeing, I'm seeing head nods. Um, Kevin, did you have something?
Well, uh, Councilmember Isaacson had his hand up before me. I just wanted to make a point of information to try to get, um, a little bit of concurrence. Do we want to use twenty and forty? Do you want us to give a, a couple of different percentages? If we do two tier like twenty five, fifty, twenty, forty, uh, I don't want to put too much on, on Dana's plate, but, uh, Director Mason's plate, but I just want to make sure that we're not underworking. Then we go over it again and, you know, again, do we want to do, we, it sounds like we have two, two tiers. What are the numbers that, that you want us to use or you want us to have a couple of different options of numbers? And give how much that would cost?
Okay, um, let's do Councilmember Isaacson and then maybe go back around if anyone has ideas on those numbers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still confused as to why we're doing it. If we don't know if this is going to help the situation, that is like the opening statement. The opening statement is this is the number of people who aren't paying their bills and it's increased since the moratorium. I'm just, I am opposed to changing it for a valid goal. If we don't know, we're going to meet that goal. Why would we change a tier system that we've had that long unless we know for a fact it's going to affect what we're trying to change?
I can also come back with a number of, uh, accounts that are actually shut off that are, um, and pending discounts or pending shut offs that receive the pending shut off notices. Um, and with past due accounts, just how many of them fall into that low income category? But I do believe it's very low, but I'll, I'll, I'll get that information as well.
Thanks.
And Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, just a quick follow up and maybe I, I didn't notice that it said that in the packet. But for me, my, uh, my, my sole reason to do this isn't just to avoid water shut offs. I think a lot of people who are low income and struggling, um, pay on time and it's still a, a struggle and still something I would like to see relieved. So, um, yes, I do hope it'll reduce the shut offs, but that's not necessarily the only reason I feel that this is important for our community. Um, there's a lot of very, you know, responsible low income people who are struggling. And anyway, I just want to make that.
All right, um, Councilmember Isaacson, did you have something else or is your hand just still up?
No, I still, but I mean, my only comment or kind of response that would be, then we need to show that that's going to save people money as opposed to just changing the code, you know what I mean? I agree with Jennifer on that, but it's like whatever we come out with is how, is it really going to save more people money? Or is it just changing the code, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think that's a valid point. Um, so I think, I'm not sure that, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Lingo.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I was, what I, one of the things I would, uh, point out, and I brought this up a few other times when we've talked about things like affordable, having affordable housing. And one of the things that affects affordable housing is utilities. And particularly if you're a single parent and you're struggling to keep shelter, keep your home warm and keep food on the plate. And what I, my experience is they will do just about anything to be sure that they have shelter and their kids are fed. And so it makes sense to me, um, that if, if we're going to go to a two tiered system, we'd be more generous because there's a lot of low wage people, um, in our area, I believe. Um, that utility assistance, um, can really make a difference about other things that are, you know, so important to their lives. So I would opt for, um, increasing the discounts.
All right, and Director Mason, I'm not sure if, you know, in terms of specific percentages, if that's something you could possibly, you know, come up with a recommendation for based on what you've seen and, um, and then we can go from there once we have a little more information at the next meeting.
That sounds good, I'll come up with a few options.
Okay, great. Um, so with that, um, uh, Councilmember Hoag, I don't know, uh, the one idea I had for the rules of procedure update, it is truly an update. Um, and it might be possible to just do it during the council meeting as long as I think the mayor is fine with that since it's just a short update. Um, or we could try and squeeze it in now, but then we probably won't have time for a break. So I just wanted to check with you and see what you wanted to do.
I, we can do it during, I can do it during the update, during the ad hoc committee update. Um, because we have a really great PowerPoint presentation that you created for us, Councilmember McKinnon. So it's all, you know, so that's good, yeah.
Okay, here, is that fine with you if we do our quick PowerPoint during the update for, okay, great. Um, then the last thing would just be the council planning calendar. Um, I think that's a recurring item on these agendas. And so I think last time I forgot to do it, but just wanted to say or ask, you can check that to see what's upcoming and if anyone had any questions or concerns on that, now would be the time to bring it up. There's a link on your packet if you need to click to it quickly. And I'm not hearing any, so, uh, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I had sent an email request to possibly put it on the agenda about the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trust if we want to sign on. I don't know if that requires an agenda item, or, or if it doesn't, but that is a potential of something I might want to see come forward. So it's, uh, their National Heritage Plan. Anyway, Mayor Okerlander knows more about it, I think.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure and talk about that on Thursday and see if it's not on this one, hopefully the next, unless it's time sensitive, so.
Thank you.
All right, uh, council member Schaefer?
Yeah, just real quick, Amy, there was a, uh, I sent out a request and there was a discussion on getting our huge sound energy, uh, government rep on the Cal agenda at some point. Uh, I think that he has good information for, uh, for all of us, and if we could give him, if we could give him up to a half hour, that'd be terrific. Uh, but even twenty minutes, I think would be useful.
Right. Absolutely. David Hoffman is a fantastic resource for us all, and I think especially with the new council members on board, it would be fantastic for him to come give an overview and what they're up to, up to these days, so. Um, we've already forwarded that on to the clerk and city administrator and hoping to get that scheduled soon. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we, we put it on the, on the prospective agenda for next Cal, and it's something for the mayor pretend, mayor pretend is the, is the arbiter of the, of the agenda for the Cal, so it's, it's, it's her call. I'm not trying to put her on the spot, but we just haven't had a chance. Our, our meeting is on Thursday, and that's when we, we look at the schedule, make sure it's not too full, but we take it into account.
And I have been trying to trim the meetings down just so we can be successful at getting through everything. So sometimes it can take a little longer to get it into a meeting, but I appreciate you guys staying on that and letting us know. All right, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at six fifty-two, just so we have a chance to take a break before the council meeting. Um, and of course, you can just turn your video off and mute yourself and stay on here because that's where the meeting will be. Thanks, everyone.
Bye, everyone.
All right, as soon as council member Naplin comes back on the screen, we'll go ahead and start the meeting. For the planning commissioners are on, the workshop portion is over, so you're welcome to stay on as attendees or go enjoy the rest of your evening. Okay, we're two minutes after seven. I am assuming council member Naplin will be getting on here shortly. And so in the interest of time, I will go ahead and call the City of Duval Council Meeting to order on Tuesday, February first, two thousand and twenty-two at seven oh two P M. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Council member Isaacson?
Here.
Council member Schaefer?
Here.
Mayor Protem McHenry?
Here.
Council member Mercer?
Here.
Council member Hoag?
Here.
Council member Naplin?
Here.
Council, council member Lengel?
Here.
Mayor Okerlander?
Here. We have a quorum, and with that, when the clerk is ready, we have the flag up. Would you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic. One name. Thank you. All right. Under, uh, do, does anyone have any additions or corrections to the agenda? All right, seeing none, we do have, uh, our attorney from somewhat law joining us this evening for a closed session. So with counsel's okay when he does join us, um, I would like to stop the agenda and move into closed session and take care of that, and then come back into regular meeting unless there are objections from the group. So with that, um, do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda, or I'm sorry, first approval? To approve this evening's consent agenda? I, nope, I'm, I'm looking at a different computer. I'm getting all mixed up tonight, guys, apologize. You have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
So move, Schaefer.
Second, McHenry. All right, it's been moved in and seconded to approve this evening's council agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All right, and, um, Ms. Thomas has her hand up?
Good evening, mayor. Thank you, Barbara Thomas, for the record. Dan Swadlow is in the waiting room of our closed session, so he won't be entering at, at this portion, so whenever council is ready.
Um, so if it's okay, I would like to go to comments from the audience and then approve the consent agenda and go straight to closed session. So with that, do we have any comments from the audience this evening? And if so, please raise your hand and the clerk will elevate you to a panelist.
I'm not seeing any, and mayor, I have not received any written input through any other means.
Excellent. Thank you, clerk McMillan. Then with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? So move, McHenry.
Second, and council member Isaacson.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this evening's consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Mayor?
Yes, hand was raised.
I'm sorry?
I, I'd like to pull something off consent.
Okay.
I'd like to pull item three.
All right, uh, we'll go ahead and move that to unfinished business. Is there a second? Actually, we don't need a second on that, so we'll go ahead and move that. Um, all in favor in, of approving the consent agenda with the removal of number three and moving it to new business, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and with that, we will move into closed session. Um, under R C W forty-two dot three zero dot one four zero sub four sub B to select, to set collective bargaining strategy. And we expect this to probably take, I believe, we schedule for ten minutes at a time. I will notify the clerk if that session is going longer, um, and she will notify the public that remains on this meeting, um, as to how long that delay will be. So with that, we will go to closed session.
Is there a separate link for closed? Sir?
Yes, um, you should have received that from Laura. It wouldn't come from me. I don't even know what it is. So, uh, let's see, perhaps Laura could get in touch with you. I will let her know that you-
Back to my IT challenge of my Surface versus my work computer, my home computer.
Yeah, but you'll need to get out of this meeting, definitely.
I understand. I just want to make sure.
Okay.
He tends to send them by meeting invite, so it may have been a meeting invite.
Forwarded it to you, so hopefully that will work.
Forward it to my Gmail.
To your city council.
Great, thanks.
I can, I can forward it to your Gmail.
Um, if you, if that's okay, yes, please.
Let me see if I can.
That's all I'm going to do because my Surface doesn't work with a so I'd have to forward it to my self and then log on to it.
Uh, I, what, what is your Gmail address? This is on Facebook Live.
Hang on, just let me log on.
Okay.
Thanks for telling me.
You're welcome.
Sarah, do you want to maybe just email Laura and just let her know?
Please.
Sarah, I'm back in the meeting. Can I ask a question? Is item three, one of, is that my item that they pulled? And put to the regular gen, I just need to know so I can prep for it.
Yeah, plans, review, examiner, promotion update.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, I would like to announce that the Duval City Council requires more time for closed session. They will be back in 10 minutes and that is at 7:27 PM.
The Duvall City Council requires 10 more minutes for a closed session. They will, as anticipated, they'll reconvene at 7:37 PM.
Thanks, Sarah.
You're welcome. Good evening. It's Sarah, City Clerk. I'm announcing that the council requires 10 more minutes for closed session. And as anticipated, they will be back at 7:47 PM. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
We are just returning from closed session to discuss collective bargaining. And we will move on to the remainder of our agenda. Hold on just a moment, I'm not sure that we have a quorum of council yet on.
John is in the attendee section, John Isaacson is, so he needs to be pulled up.
And then we'll still be waiting on council member Mercer and council member Napland.
Thanks, Sarah.
Great, I know the council member Napland will be here just momentarily, so we'll go ahead and move on to our agenda. So those who are here, if you can turn your cameras on, that'd be great. And we'll move back on to scheduled items. First up is mayor's report. Just briefly, but kind of extensively, I sent an email out to council today with some, an update on the middle housing bills from Association of Washington Cities, as well as the substitute bill that passed out of the Senate. I don't know who all had a chance to read that, but unfortunately, the bill that passed out of the Senate is far, or out of the Senate Committee, not the Senate yet, was, is far more reaching than the original bill that we testified against a couple of weeks ago. Some key points of this substitute bill is our, our one concern was addressed, but not in a good way. And that is when we, we expressed our concern about the fact that the city of Duval will be set to exceed our growth targets based on current development within our cycle and that this bill would force us to significantly exceed that by taking away our single-family zoning and requiring the allowance of duplexes pretty much everywhere. So the legislature amended that bill so that we wouldn't quote unquote be punished for exceeding our growth targets, which essentially turns growth targets into meaningless numbers with this bill. Additionally, something that is very disturbing, in my opinion, and many other mayors opinions, that was added to the substitute bill is exempting condominium associations, HOAs, and community associations. So that would effectively, it would effectively create community councils by neighborhood within cities within Washington State. For those that are unaware, the cities of Bellevue and Kirkland still have community associations that were developed under state law to help those newly annexed areas have a voice in the city and planning process and retain some autonomy. Oh, historically, those have become very inequitable organizations and they have been able to quote unquote block things that the rest of the city must implement. And a bill recently passed out a committee to finally do away with those community councils. This bill would essentially make our HOAs into community councils. So our neighborhoods with HOAs would not be required to follow the state law. But those without HOAs would, which would have potentially devastating impact on Old Town and spur the redevelopment of Old Town into duplexes or more. So some really bad news has come out on that. What we are hearing is that the sponsors are really bent on passing this legislation this year. And so that was most of my day today, trying to deal with those changes that just came out of the Senate and trying to communicate with others so that we can, we can hopefully, if we can't get this bill stopped, to continue to work to get us carved out of this bill. What I have not heard from anyone on the bill sponsor's side is real concerns about our transportation and our concurrency issues. One of the items that I did share in the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Board Steering Committee today is that in addition to exceeding the growth targets, this could cause long-term moratoriums in our city as we would need to update, further update our water, sewer, and stormwater plans, as well as our transportation elements. And it could be easily with all of those components, five years of moratoriums, which would also halt any potential economic development in our community. So if you know anybody who's an elected official around the state, please call and share our concerns with them and urge them to contact their legislators. This is a bill that is significantly dividing our communities. And there are a lot of cities that feel like this is just fine, but it's not. A prime example, you know, of cities that would in general be supportive of trying to find ways to accommodate more housing, like the city of Redmond, the, those HOA areas are actually where the property exists to be able to accommodate that type of housing, that redevelopment. AWC did bring up in Minneapolis where these policies have been put into effect. They've had the opposite effect and have actually been displacing more residents than they've been placing as far as the middle housing, which I think we all knew. But unfortunately, there's a lot of folks in the legislature right now that are not understanding that. I don't have any updates on any other bills because honestly, this has taken all of my time. But the policy cutoff is on February 3rd. So the policy only bills should be, will know if they're moving or not. And then I will try and tomorrow, try and pull up a more comprehensive email update of the bills we've been tracking and get those out to you. So the quick question I have for you guys is any change in direction on pushing forward to either stop this bill or get cities like Duval carved out as it doesn't, so it doesn't negatively impact our ability to operate as a city? Council member Schaefer?
I'd very much like to see it carved out of this, this bill. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, I thought, I thought it was, I thought it was applicable to cities with 20,000 or more population. Is that not correct?
No, it starts at 10,000. And so as soon as our city hits 10,000, we have a very limited time to change our zoning and prove that we can, we are implementing a policy.
Okay, good, no, not good, but, but good for me to know, understand that. And, you know, truly, this is going to take the, you know, large part of the management of our city out of our hands and give us, you know, leave us powerless to manage growth and, you know, and related, you know, items, preservation of our historic downtown, preservation of our historic neighborhoods will all be taken away from us.
Council member Lingle? You're on mute, council member.
Thank you on that. I think it's unfortunately necessary to, to oppose, to continue to oppose the bill. There's no evidence that increased density does anything for affordability. And I do believe the way the bill is structured, it will promote more displacement in communities that are often communities of diversity. The one, one, I guess, one little thing I don't agree with you on mayor is community councils don't have to be the problem you described in Bellevue. I've seen community councils be effective partners of government for more than 40 years. So let's not lay with them all the same is all I'm asking.
No, I, I'm specifically referring to these two, which is why they're there because they have in fact stopped the implementation of GMA policies.
Yeah, and I think that, that, you know, that gets into the, in a relationship between, you know, using tools like SEPA to stop projects and, and some of these other things that are technicalities council probably doesn't care about. But I do hope we will always remember that we can make community organizations our partners, even if it doesn't work somewhere else.
Oh, absolutely. This is, this is just a situation in those cities where you literally have an elective body within an elective body making decisions that are contrary to the entire city's wishes, so.
And I do think you're right that with the HOA situation, I mean, this was actually asked the question, well, could this happen in Taylor's Ridge? Well, typically state law trumps, hate that word, but a state law over, is over an HOA or, you know, set of covenants and a good example is solar. You can't, you, you can't do anything in an HOA to stop somebody installing solar. So yeah, I think the way that's exempted is inappropriate.
Thank you. Council member Isaacson and then council member Mercer.
I think that just kind of summarized what I was thinking to mayor was if, if we can't get exempted, maybe our city approaches, we, we approach these HOAs and the CCRs and say, as council, this is what we think you want. How about we leverage that to our advantage and have them go in and put in their CCRs and their HOA to say, we're not going to do this. The city, the state allows it, but the HOA is going to say, we're not going to do it like that.
Well, that's just it, it takes away, that's part of the problem actually is that it takes away the city's ability to zone appropriately and puts our Old Town risk of redevelopment in a way that the city can't control. So you, it basically puts most of the city in the place of actually not us not being able to, as a city, work with our neighborhoods to determine appropriate zoning and it allows neighborhoods to veto whatever the city needs to do. So that, that for one neighborhood can literally displace all of that housing to another neighborhood that's not ideal for that type of zoning. So that's, but I understand what you're saying, I just wanted to clarify a little bit there. Council member Mercer?
I was just curious, mayor, I know when I, I haven't read the, the full bill with the amendment, when I originally reviewed it, I know some of the introductory text specifically referred to, you know, implementing these changes around transit quarters and other things in addition to the, the middle housing piece. And, and I was curious, you know, in terms of the reference to the carve out, if in the conversations that occurred, and I know you've, you've already voiced numerous concerns if there were additional factors or classifications that, such as, you know, access to a transportation or light rail or other things that would allow Duval and similar cities that are more rural in character or have transportation infrastructure impediments to basically, you know, lend themselves to a carve out category. I don't know if that was part of the conversations that occurred because it seems like there are other factors in addition to the 10,000 population that could also exempt Duval in similar communities.
Um, yes, we have tried to bring up those topics. It has been unsuccessful. And so the substitute bill that passed out of the Senate, it, it mentions high capacity transit every 15 minutes, but it does not exclude our cities of 10,000 or more from the policy if we don't have that. And that's part of the problem. That's a huge part of the problem. So that's another angle we're working on. It was also made very clear today by AWC staff that the legislature is not listening to the preemption argument. So our arguments about our infrastructure and access to transit and public safety as a result of traffic congestion are pretty much all we've got right now at this point.
Okay, thank you.
It's frustrating, so. Anyone else? Okay, now I've got the Debbie Downer topic out of the way, fun to make more normal report. So the Sound Cities Association Board Retreat was last Friday from, in the morning, we did a half day retreat. We were focusing on re-engaging, re-energizing, and building for the future. It was incredibly moving to be with the board virtually. It was almost as if we were together. While we have several new board members, we are very jealous as a group. And I think this is the most supportive and tight SCA board that I've seen since my membership on the board. And I'm really excited to see what work we all do through Sound Cities this upcoming year. At the SVG meeting last week, thanks for those that did attend, I'll just say briefly, we presented on the draft, early draft Snoqualmie Valley Governments Association Transportation Plan as far as starting to identify priorities, subject areas and projects. And we presented that, we did not meet last Thursday, everyone had conflicts. We'll be meeting again this Thursday to start to refine a little bit more and start working more in depth on creating strategies to achieve what we all need to achieve. I also had an introductory meeting with Congressman Schreier's office last week. For, I think everyone's well aware at this point that in the near future, Congresswoman Del Benny will no longer be our Congresswoman. Kim Schreier will be ours and had a great conversation with her district staff. They're eager to learn our area. Representative Schreier is very engaged and very community oriented. And I look forward to our city being able to develop a good relationship with them. We also had last week, the Association of Washington Cities Board Meeting. Most of our conversation did focus on what was going on in the legislature. The middle housing bill took a significant amount of conversation, as did criminal justice reform. Criminal justice reform modifications are being proposed and hopefully made. Representative Goodman and from our district is working doggedly to make sure that the fixes that are made achieve what law enforcement needs and what our community needs. And of course, legislation's always made to be tweaked when it doesn't work appropriately. So they're working really, really hard on that and hope to get some positive changes through before the end of session. We also had our King County Council District Number Three Mayor's meeting. The letter that I forwarded on to council is an FYI this morning was a result of that meeting with Mayor Polly, Mayor Pavone from Brenton, Mayor Bernie. And I can't remember all the district, all the members of, I'm sorry, not KC3, the Fifth District Legislative District Mayor's Caucus. And so that was a letter brought up by Mayor Polly to just kind of reiterate and thank the legislature for what they're doing and also continue to do what we can to draw attention to the challenges of the middle housing bills. We also, oops. Also, I was fortunate to have one-on-one dinner meeting with our new council member, Sarah Perry and her husband Bill Ramos last weekend. It was really nice to start to get to know her on a more personal level. Like, the one thing I have to say is she's got a lot of energy and a lot of drive. And while she's a very newly elected official, I think she's going to represent our district very well. Had a meeting with Representative Goodman on Monday morning regarding the middle housing bill. He is a bill sponsor. He was unaware of some of the unintended consequences. And as we have more conversations, we're finding out that the people that are pro and the bill sponsors are really not sharing with the legislators the concerns that cities have and are, are really kind of implying that this is what cities want to do, which is not a good place to be, which means a lot more work to do as well. Yesterday morning, we had our, no, this morning, we had our Snoqualmie Valley Government Association Mayor's meeting. Senator Mullet from the Fifth District was there. There is still hope of getting a transportation package through using some of the surplus general fund taxes to fund really some of the mega projects in Washington State, which includes 522, the improvements on Highway 18, including some of those needed in the city of Snoqualmie that are off of Highway 18. And the bridge, I5 Bridge in Vancouver. There's not a whole lot of hope of getting other projects this year. However, what we are hearing from the legislators is that within the next couple of years, they hope to bring forward a package with potentially a gas tax increase to really start to address the smaller projects that aren't getting addressed right now. But I do have to say those mega projects are important and 522 is very important to us as the population in Snohomish County grows. We had the North End Mayor's meeting today, so there are several new mayors in the group, including from Woodinville, Yarrow Pint, and Woodinville and Yarrow Point, and there was one more that is not coming to mind at the moment. So it was good to see everyone and have a new group dynamic and looking forward to getting to know those new mayors better over the coming months. I already briefed just a little bit on the Association of Washington Cities Board Legislative Steering Committee. So middle housing and criminal justice report, or I'm sorry, voting rights reform were the only two topics we had. There are significant concerns with the voting rights legislation. There are significant concerns with the voting rights legislation and how it's applied in lack of acknowledgement, for example, of cities of 10,000 not being in control of their elections and it will put a lot of pressure on cities. So the association is really trying to balance to work and get legislators to understand the challenges and the pitfalls in the legislation while being very cautious to not do anything that hampers votes and access to voting. So with that, that is the end of my report. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, see none? Thank you. It's been a busy, busy couple of weeks. So we'll go ahead and move on to King County Fire District 45 and clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Erskine did send in that he didn't have a report, correct?
He said he didn't have a report and requested that he reported the next February meeting in February because he would have something to report at that time.
Excellent. Thank you. Now, moving on to council committee reports, first up is finance and administration.
I guess I could go ahead. At our last meeting, we just worked on the procurement policy more. And our next meeting is this Thursday, I believe. And we can, are planning to continue and work on the procurement policy. I think also Director Mason had one item she was bringing initially to the beginning of the meeting. So yeah, I'll have a better update next time.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Next up is the Land Use Committee. Oh, Councilmember Ho, we can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Michelle.
We, we can, you're very, very faint. Councilmember Napland, would you like to get the land use committee report since we can't hear Councilmember Hoag?
I was worried we were going to come to that and I found my, my notes. I, I didn't take notes as if I was going to have to give a presentation though. So I'll just go over what was on the agenda. We discussed the Duval Foundation for the Arts and their request for a facilitator. And then we talked about some of the things that Mayor Oakenlander just spoke about, the middle housing legislation. We also just got a brief update on where staff is with the Open Gov implementation. It sounds like it's moving along well. There was also an update on policy work and trying to figure out how staff will carve out time to get some of that work done. And we had good of the order and I feel like I brought something up and now I can't remember what it was. So maybe, maybe Michelle can remember because I didn't take notes on everything.
It looks like she's still on mute there. So we'll move on to public safety.
And let's see, Councilmember McHenry, it's okay with you if I give the report? Okay, let's see. As far as the hiring update, we expect two new lateral exceptional entry hires in the next few weeks, which is great news for us. At the same time, we've had two officers recently leave. That was, that was expected. They gave notice some, you know, some time ago. On the, on the good news side though, the applicant pool has been strong. Chief DeBach thinks that's largely due to advertising through Neo, Neo Gov. I think we got six lateral candidates applied within a couple week period, which is, which is great for us. As far as our water safety, we do have our jet skis, our wave runners now. And those will, we have a training program lined up related to, to that. And we expect to be patrolling on the water this summer, which is terrific news. We also discussed a police department monthly report for council. We decided to keep it as simple as we could. The report will essentially consist of the Public Safety Committee Agenda with the addition of the some police department news that we think council members would be generally interested in. And also monthly stats at the, at the end of the month. You know, good of the order set section. It was mentioned that we've seen some graffiti along Northeast Big Rock Road. I've seen it myself now since Amy brought it to our attention. However, the chief did not feel that there was a trend or anything going on here. And, and we do get graffiti down a few times a year. So I guess it's probably going to be Steve's problem now to, to get rid of that. Also discussed mental health issues over the holidays. The feeling was without any statistic, the feeling was mental health issues were up. No surprise with the pandemic going on. And Chief DeBach is discussing the possibility of getting a mental health professional on board that will work directly with the police department, a possible kind of sharing partnership with Redmond and Fire District 45. And that's it. Chief, anything they have?
I think he's trying to unmute here.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I lost connection there. What was the question? Sorry.
You may not have heard the report, but I just asked if there was anything to, to add from what I said.
I think you did a very good job. We did get a new recruit who started today, actually a female officer who was, came on board. We're very happy to have her. And we have another lateral applicant starting on the seventh. So we're very excited. We're starting to get our staffing levels back up. So that's a good thing. And like Councilmember Schaefer said, we did get six applicants on our list. I, I can't remember the last time we had that type of turnout for a recruiting effort. So yeah, that Neo Gov is definitely working for us.
Thank you.
If the box looks like Spock, I need to call you Spock the Bach on the video, man.
All right, moving on to the Public Works Committee.
Thank you. So we just had a brief meeting on the 21st to discuss initial survey questions for the Big Rock Park expansion, just higher level things. So we worked through that. And then our next meeting for the committee is on Wednesday, the ninth of this month. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Moving on to ad hoc committees, council procedures. And this will, for the public, we did also have time scheduled to discuss an update in the committee of the whole and ran out of time. So this will be a little bit longer than the normal report. Councilmember Hoag.
I'm back. Can you hear me?
Can hear you now.
I had to switch computers. So, um, I just wanted to give an update on our procedures. It's really exciting. We're actually getting very close to being done. At our last meeting, we actually got through every section of the procedures manual, with the exception of 5.6 and 7.1 and the code of conduct. So those are three sections that we will be bringing to all of you at a retreat. And so I'm hoping that you will have a chance to read through the edited version of our procedures and then give us feedback specifically on those three sections for, for the retreat.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you want me to share the presentation and just do that?
Sure, that'd be great. The presentation, the PowerPoint that Mayor Portem McHenry has created is in our packet. So I won't read it word for word, but you can, you know, you can find it in our packet. So I think what, what we've done so far is kind of done the basic editing. I know that our previous city clerk, Jody Wyckoff, helped us with a lot of the, the, you know, researching RCWs and making all the changes from city administrator to mayor where needed. And so we, and then changing it from biennial budget to, and, or from annual budget to biennial budget everywhere that, that it mentioned annual budget. And then we've also worked on updating and adding more collaborative language to the, to describe the roles of councilman and administration. So. Next.
All right. Is there anyone that?
This just gives you an example of some of the things that we've modified. And I think that you all have copies of the, of the edited version. And next. Councilmember McHenry, thank you. So this just kind of describes an outline of where we are next. We'll be coming to the retreat to review those three sections. And then the ad hoc committee will draft, after we get feedback from council, we'll, we'll be drafting those sections and we'll be reviewing them with the mayor and our administration and the city attorney and staff. And then we will be coming back to council. Of course, along the way, we'll be reviewing it with our city attorney as well. After the whole policy is adopted, then we will do the social media in a separate separate time because that's a big topic. So that's, I think that's it. Thank you.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions for Councilmember Hoag? Seeing none, we will move on to other council reports. Does anyone have anything else to share? Mayor Portem?
Just a quick reminder that I have a council chat scheduled on Tuesday, February 8th from five to six. It's virtual on Teams and I think it was just posted on the city Facebook page as well. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor Portem. All right, moving along to city administrator report. Mr. Apple.
Oh, I've only got 14 slides today. But I, I'm going to speak and then I've got a quick thing from, because it kind of came out of a very last thing from Director Lenishewski. And then we have a quick presentation that's already in the agenda from, from Director Mason. Let me get this, this is there up here. I will not do that. Okay, now it does it. So obviously the date, this is mine. So the Open Gov Finance and Permitting Modules are going live in March. Utility module in April, payroll module a few months later because of delay in implementation, payroll module. Director Mason was able to strong arm Open Gov into paying for the extended contract with Springbrook. So we're not going to be on the hook for that because of the Open Gov. She did a very good job of essentially laying it out to them and then they, they've accepted that. So, so we're not paying anything extra for the fact that we're extending in Springbrook. Salary and compensation study update. Today we had our kickoff meeting with the union, discuss methodology of the study. We met with the facilitator to discuss a facilitated conversation with DFA. I think that was mentioned at another point. We received a scope of work on, that is under review by staff and mayor and Mayor Portem. We anticipated providing, we anticipate providing a scope of work for review and comment at the land use committee and the city council meeting. We met with Cass Holderman to discuss summer stage and the arts and the process going forward. And that's sort of setting us up for, for kickoff meetings with our community event partners for the next few weeks. One of the, well, we've just got a number of things we need to start moving on on all of the events and making sure that we have everything in place for that. Because it has been a while since we've really done a full summer and we want to make sure that we're doing it right. So we're going to meet with each one of the community event partners. And then we also have a draft agreement for the Tall Brothers Final Plaid has been drafted. Land Use Committee review, are reviewing it tomorrow. And then on the 15th of February, it'll come back. And I think that Councilmember Hoag, is that a question for me? I just see a hand raised. I didn't.
No, I just wanted to hopefully go back and add something to the land use update. That's all.
When, when Administrator Apple's done, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and defer and let that go out of order. So go ahead, Mr. Apple.
Okay. So that was, that was my portion. If there's any questions for me, otherwise we have, Steve needs to talk a little bit about something that's come up with the, the new female officer. We still have to do, we thought we had already approved and had plans going forward for her new changing area that she's not going to be like changing the hallway. So it's, but we, we had a plan going ahead for her own, her own changing area and that we, we need to reintroduce it. So I think Steve, if Steve can, can bring that up real quick and then it'll go to Dana where she has the presentation that we've already present, sent to everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. Good evening, council. Steve Lenishewski, Public Works, Mayor and other citizens. Hello. Just a quick note, yes, we are, we have allocated funds for work at the police station. We are progressing through that. Obviously with the drop of project management, we are trying to ramp back up. We have one project manager on board and we just closed at midnight last night, our first round review of the next project manager. So hopefully get that on board quickly. But to that avail, one of the items that was an additional, if you can remember the 20 item laundry list, I, I don't expect you to. We will talk about it at committee next week. So I have my Public Works Committee, we'll talk about there. So you will see something refreshed on changing some walls around. If you're not familiar with the police station, they have a locker room, non-designated gender. So it's just open, right? Lockers, toilet, shower, regular old locker room. So we, we were looking with ARC on potentially adding some walls, reconfiguring some doors and trying to make a, a changing room instead of this wide open space. So just know we'll be coming forward. And I did meet the new officer today. So she's on board. So we'd like to get cracking on that. And there is another candidate too, female that looks, like I said, Mike's very happy. They're recruiting a ton of folks. So it's great. So we will be bringing that forward sooner than later. It's one to put it out there since I haven't seen you all in a while.
Thank you, Director Lenishewski. Councilmember Schaefer. You're on mute.
I thought we approved all, all of this, including the changes to the locker rooms and funded it. Is there a reason it has to come back, council?
Yeah, the way it was processed, the, the amount of funding is set aside for specific tasks and we, there was a color coded sheet, which I will refresh you all with. We did kind of embargo some of those tasks and some of them were ambiguous, I guess is a fair term. We weren't quite sure what to expect. But yeah, right now it's not looking all that expensive and ARC is helping us out. So we'll, we'll be back soon. I just want to let you guys know that we are working on it. It is a concern for recruitment and retention purposes of police officers.
Okay, okay. No, that, thank you.
You bet.
Yeah. And, and I'm going to, and just the fact that we thought it had been, the chief of police thought it had been, it was sort of assumed that it was. That was mentioned at the Public Safety Committee and it'd be thought it was. And then when we did a review, Steve told us that we were incorrect in our assumptions, which are, which happen sometimes. So I apologize for the fact that we gave the wrong impression because we thought we had already approved it.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to the preliminary year-end financials.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Dana Mason, Finance Director. Let me share my screen real quick. So council, I sent a, the preliminary Q four or quarter four finance report out to you today. And I'm sorry it was so late. So instead of going through this whole entire report or whole entire presentation, which is awesome. I'll just show you the first two slides and then at the next Cal meeting, we can go through the rest of it. And you might have some questions after looking over the report. And the report that I sent you, it's preliminary because we just haven't done a lot of our, our year end adjustments and truing up. So I just have two slides. And the first one is just revenue through the end of the year and fifty, as you know, 50% of the biennium is complete. We've received 40% of revenue. And it may appear low halfway through the rev, through the biennium, but the majority of the development revenue that's budgeted is expected in 2022, which affects the building and permit fund, which is in the special revenue funds category, which you can see is kind of low at 33%. And then it also affects the revenue and the capital projects funds, they impact fees. And then the utility funds, the general facility fees or charges. And then there's also a $3 million transfer of revenue from the sewer operating fund to the sewer capital improvements fund. So that, that also hasn't happened and that's included as revenue as well. So we're, we're actually looking pretty good, right, right as expected, just a little bit higher in the general funds. So we're, we're actually looking pretty good, right, right as expected, just a little bit higher in the general funds. Then expenditures are lower than expected halfway through the biennium for the, for the same reasons. School impact fees in the building permit fund are development related and they're passed through to the school district. And since they're development rate related, those are expected, the bulk of them are expected in 2022. And then the majority of the capital of project expenditures are occurring in 2022. And then there's also that $3 million transfer out, which is an expenditure. So and the, the general fund seems a little bit lower as well, but we only had a city administrator for a part of the year. And we've had a few positions that have been emptied, so that should, it's actually looking, looking right where it should be looking at this point in time. And then internal service funds, you can see at 41.2%. A lot of the equipment we haven't been able to, or vehicles we haven't been able to purchase yet, just because they're not available. So it's, it's actually looking pretty good. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Director Mason. Does anyone have any questions for Director Mason? Councilmember Langel. You're on mute, Councilmember.
I'm sorry, trying to be quiet over here. I thought it might be beneficial for Director Mason to explain what, what REIT is to our new council members. Now, Councilmember Mercer probably knows, but maybe not Councilmember Isaacson. It is a significant source that's tied to development.
Well, it is, it's actually tied more, REIT is real estate excise tax.
I know.
Yeah, received when the city went from sales of property. So yeah, so yes, you're right. For new construction, we are going to see more REIT later in the year as development occurs and those units are sold. So we receive two different types of REIT. And hopefully at some point in time, I can sit down with our two new council members and we can go over the budget reports and you can ask me anything you'd like if you have the answer.
Thank you, Director Mason. And I just want to say, well done, as always on the report. Your numbers have always been spot on and accurate in your assumptions. And I know that I personally appreciate the clarity and simplicity of the reports. It's really easy to see what's going on and I know that the public appreciates that as well. So thank you. We do not have any special presentations this evening or public hearings, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Agenda Bill 22-05, Interlocal for Snoqualmie Valley Housing Needs Assessment for discussion with Director Thomas.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am going to hopefully share my screen, so give me just a second. Okay, everybody see my screen? With my presentation? Okay, thank you. So the good news is we have finished the draft ILA agreement. All cities have reviewed it. It's been updated to address not just Duval's comments, but also our other valley partners. So we are recommending at this meeting to approve the ILA. In your council packet, you have an agenda bill and you have a clean version and a strike through version. And so I've identified the essential changes in the agreement. So you'll see Section 8, Commerce has designated a portion of the grant funds awarded to each city to be managed by North Bend. So that was one of the updates. Section 2.2, we requested North Bend consult with cities prior to selecting a consultant and that language has been included with the addition that North Bend shall be responsible for all payments due to the consultant. Section 2.4, the issuance of the draft assessment, we want that provided to all cities within 14 days of the completion of the housing needs assessment. Section 2.6, the funding section has added to state that the work is limited to just the housing needs assessment and that's all. Section 3.1 through 3.4 were deleted in whole and that was the financing section and they created another section. North Bend will receive the city's grant dollars directly. Sorry, I had to typo there. Section 6, Administration, North Bend City Administrator shall be the administrator of the agreement. So that's the person that will be ultimately responsible. Section 7, Added Language for Indemnification, that's common in agreements. Oops, sorry about that. Section A, Scope of Work and the Project Sched, Project Schedule has been added. And there were some other minor updates. I can take any questions at this point.
Great. Does council have any questions for Director Thomas? Seeing none, are you all ready to move this forward at the next meeting? Great. Oh, Director Thomas?
We were hoping for a decision this evening. That's what was in, I believe, the agenda bill.
Okay, on the, on the agenda, it says discussion only. So then in that case, I would be happy to entertain a motion. Councilmember Lingle.
Make a motion to approve Agenda Bill 22-05, Interlocal for Snoqualmie Valley Housing Needs Assessment.
Second, McHenry.
Right. Any discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Bill 22-05, Interlocal for Snoqualmie Valley Housing Needs Assessment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Bill, our new business, an Agenda Bill 22-10, Ordinance Revising Utility Billing Procedures for Discussion and/or Decision. And this was also discussed, I'm sorry, no, this was not discussed during committee of the whole. That was a slightly different topic. Go ahead, Director Mason.
Well, again, council and mayor, let me go ahead and share my screen, the summary. And so this was actually discussed, changes to municipal code relating to billing procedures and, and also the, the person that is actually billed for, for utility during utility billings was discussed at the January 4th council of the whole meeting. And this entails changes to chapters, three different chapter, DMC chapters, the one for billing procedures for water, for billions in collections for sewer and for storm drain. And the changes prohibits the billing of residential tenants, but allows for a duplicate bill sent to the tenant for a small, to be determined fee. It would be effective immediately for new accounts. And then there we, we would give existing accounts two years for leases to be changed, that agreements to be changed. And then it also extends the time between pending disconnection notice to shut off from five days to 10 days. Give it additional time for, for, for the mail. And then it also provides something we didn't discuss before, but current practice and has been for years is to allow the, the finance director, the discretion to move one late fee per account if a customer has a really good billing history or, or payment history for two years. So I would like to get that added to DMC as well as council is still interested in that. And for if council is interested in that, this is a practice that a lot of utilities do, so, including my utility. So are, are there any questions?
I'm not seeing any question. Oh, Councilmember Napoli?
Yeah, I was reminded of a question earlier about those who get the late shut off notices. And I'm wondering if, if there's any effort to alert the people who are having shut offs, of the, I see heads nodding, of the low income. Because I think you were saying you weren't sure how many people would be eligible. I know even if you let people know about a program, they may or may not choose to sign up. But I just wanted to know if that was something happening.
Our utility billing clerk, she actually, she provides the information on the pending disconnections notices, I believe. There was a sample. So she, and then there's also, she, she calls everybody. I mean, she really tries hard to get them to pay so we don't have to shut off their water. But she, she does provide them information, not only about our, our program, which, you know, the 12 month program takes, you can pay over 12 months if you're behind, but also resources that are available for, for people to help them with their utility bills.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Are there any other questions from council? All right, is council ready to take out, oh, Councilmember Schaefer?
The words right out of my mouth. I was going to ask, we could go ahead and take action.
Absolutely. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move that we approve, let me get the right, AB, AB 22-10, Ordinance Revising Utility Billing Procedures.
Second, Henry.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Bill 22-10, Ordinance Revising Utility Billing Procedures. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to a simple item and a positive one as well. Agenda Bill 22-11, Planning Commission Appointment. And tonight, we're asking you to approve the appointment of Patrick Van Clampit to our City of Duval Planning Commission, position number one for an unexpired term in 2025. Does council have any questions about this appointment?
What does that mean? Sorry.
So the mayor chooses who goes on boards and commissions. And for example, Planning Commission, the council takes a vote to concur with that appointment. It's simply a confirmation, a formal confirmation. Would any council members like to make a motion?
Oh, go ahead, Rick.
I move we approve AB 22-11, Planning Commission Appointment.
My second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, Patrick, congratulations and welcome to the Planning Commission. For those that did not notice, or maybe you did, he did participate in the open government training, so he's already being active. Planning staff and I interviewed him last week and feel like he's going to be a great addition to the Planning Commission, especially as a relatively new resident who's lived literally all over the world. He's going to provide a really broad perspective that I think will be good for our community. And with that, Mr. Van Clampit, would you like to say anything to the council about yourself or, or the Planning Commission?
About myself, like you said, mayor, I am a recent addition to this town. We moved in here seven months ago, but we've been coming here seven years because our daughter and her family do live here. The reason we came here was to be part of our grandson's lives. The fact, you know, COVID is a bad thing, but it does allow me to work largely from home, which enabled me to move close to, to my family. This town reminds me of the town I grew up in, in terms of size and in terms of problems of growth, you know, either positive or negative, it's growth. And that's, you know, where my interest is in, in, in how communities develop and grow and manage that and, you know, keep, keep control of it somehow, well, also keep, keep, keeping people happy that live here. Right? I always enjoy the downtown. I think that's something that has to be safeguarded for, for all of us, because it's one of the reasons you, you get out, in my opinion, just go downtown and it's, it's, it's special. It's, it's all apart from, from a lot of other places, the hardened soul that's in downtown. So that's the reason I decided to knock on the door to join.
Great, great. Welcome, welcome, Patrick.
Thank you. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to our final agenda item, Agenda Bill 22-09, Plans Review Examiner Promotion Update. This was removed from the consent agenda, so I will leave it to Councilmember Hoag to provide any explanation and then to Director Thomas to answer any questions that need to be answered at this point.
Truly, the only reason I asked for this to be pulled from the consent agenda is because I felt uncomfortable having it on the consent agenda because it involves a budget item. And I just feel like this should be open to the council for any discussion. And that was my only reason for pulling it off there. So.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, would a member of the body like to make a motion for approval?
I move we to approve Agenda Bill 22-09, Approving the Promotion of the Building Inspector to Plans Examiner 1.
Second, Schaefer.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Bill 22-09, Plans Review Examiner Promotion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we have no further business. So unless there are objections, we are adjourned. And congratulations for our second meeting, two out of three so far this year, ending before 9:00 PM. Great work, everybody, and have a good week. We'll see you in two weeks.